I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Howard's Board Appeals. It's 7:00 PM on February 22nd. And I need to read some opening remarks. Now, welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board Appeals on this date, February 22nd. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. And I just want to check for a second with our audio person. There's nobody that's called in online to the meeting tonight? I notice there's nothing on the screen.
I was informed there would be an online portion of the meeting today.
Okay, I'm not aware of it either, but I know what happened last meeting or so. I didn't know if there was...
Yeah, I was informed that it would be an online portion.
Okay. It wasn't posted that way, so I just wanted to double-check because it's been happening. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize and promptly any member of the Board, Secretary or any attorney presenting the case, to inform the Chair if any protocol is not being followed. And I'd like to kick things off by having, as the Chair here, ask the Board to identify themselves, siding with Dave.
David Nunley.
Alexander Dunne.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Ryer.
Tim Bailey.
Okay. And so we have a quorum tonight. We have five Board members present. And I guess I'd want to first, just ask the clerk to call the first case.
Good. Case number 20...
Is John Carey here? Okay. Probably step forward if you'd like to, sir.
John W. Carey, 56, Cook Circle, Hyannis. The owner of the property located at 5 Belknecks Road, map 10 parcel G1, RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative, a variance, to change the use of the multifamily use and create a habitable space with setbacks on the pre-existing non-conforming structure pursuant to... ...52 and 54A. That's General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10. We also have some conditions with regard to the historical committee. They want the foundation to remain as it, not currently stand, but they want the foundation still left intact. And the planning board wants to be made, let me know, that must comply with the planning And there is also a party that is in opposition of it. And I think they might be here. You have a copy of... It came through our planning board to Sheila Delaney. And it is from William and Maria Mahoney.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. All right, thanks, Al. Before I recognize the applicant, I just want to kind of qualify things and have the Board comment on this. It, actually, our Board tonight, I believe, is here to hear, to grant a special, to consider a special permit on the alternative variance regarding the applicant's plan to have the current structure remain with the same size setbacks as it sat since 1871.
That's correct.
Right. And that the, regarding a special permit for multifamily, that's already been decided upon by the planning board.
That's correct.
So we're here tonight as a Board to hear the applicant's proposal for the building, which is on your plan as Phase 1, for the current building, to remain with the same setbacks.
That's correct.
And we're not here to decide whether or not any approval for multifamily. All right? Am I, the rest of the Board reading this? Am I correct on this? Okay. All right. I don't hear any objections and...
No, wait a minute. Because Section 325-51-Q, multifamily special permit...
Comes out of the planning board.
...that the planning board is the special permit granting authority for multifamily developments.
Right. And that's why, and they've already...
They've approved it.
They've approved it.
So that's why I'm not sure why this is before us unless it's for variance.
The planning board wanted either a special permit or a variance considered regarding the current setbacks for the building as it sits.
And I think it was the building commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I'm William Riley, an attorney at Chatham. I represent Mr. Carey, John. And the, so the existing building doesn't meet the current setback. Current setback is 25 feet and the building is...
16 feet.
16 feet from the rear property line. And so according to 325-54, because we want to change, alter, or extend the use in a non-conforming building, it has to, it has to meet the setback requirement or issue of variance.
Or a special permit.
But did the planning board not give you relief in their special permit that they granted?
Well, they, well, so they're the planning board and not the zoning board, so they can only, they can grant us a special permit to have multifamily there in that building. But the, because we don't want to move the building, we need a variance from this board or a special permit.
Right. I think we do probably a special permit, but the planning board and their conditions indicated that they needed to meet with the, with the Appeals Board regarding the setback and get the Appeals Board to approve it.
Right.
And although I don't disagree with the fact that, I'm not quite sure why the case is here, but since the planning board has required as a condition for our Board to, you know, approve a special permit or an alternative variance, that's why they're here tonight.
Okay. My only concern is, do we have the authority to grant a special permit under 325...
Not for multifamily.
We're not going to...
We're not ruling on multifamily.
It's a multifamily project. That's where I'm coming from.
Right, but the...
It's not a single or two-family dwelling. It's a multifamily, and it looks to me, under the bylaw, that the planning authorities got sole control of special permits.
Well, that's...
Including site plan review. Now, I understand what they said. They sent it over here to us, but I, I think they're going to have to have a variance from my perspective. I don't, I don't think we have authority to grant a special permit on a multifamily development.
So we can go to root on a variance.
I, I think so. That's my reading of it. I mean, it's not clear.
Again, I mentioned a special permit or an alternative variance.
Yeah, no, I know they've asked for it in the alternative, but as we know, it's a much higher requirement to get a variance. So I, I don't know. I guess my feeling is we need an opinion from Town Council on this if we're going to consider a special permit.
Well, we have, well, the building commissioner has rendered an opinion that we need a variance.
Well, yes, but that's not gospel. Okay? That's his interpretation.
Well, that's true.
For the Board of Appeals, and yes, we understand that, we consider what the building inspector has said, but we don't always agree with the building inspector. And I'm just looking at the bylaw, and I have a question whether this Board can grant a special permit on a multifamily development. Because they're, they're the special, the planning board is the special permit granting authority for multifamily developments, including conversion. So it seems to me, since they also have site plan review, they can deal with the issue of setbacks.
That they, you know, unfortunately, the planning board does not have the authority to grant modifications for dimensional, the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Well, I think they do that on a regular case in subdivisions. And they grant an exception. It's, they don't call it a variance. I mean, you can look at, most subdivision plans don't meet the strict requirements for a single-family lot. Okay?
Well, most subdivisions are required to meet the requirements of the bylaw. So, you know, they have cluster subdivisions, as I'm sure you're aware, where they, they have the authority specifically granted in the bylaw to approve of subdivisions where in a grid subdivision, they could have a certain number of lots. They can have the same number of lots in a cluster subdivision, provided there's X percentage of open space and it's, and their other, their obligations regarding the open space. But they don't have the authority to say you can, you can build a house on one of those lots that doesn't meet the setback.
Well, you know, I don't want to get into a big debate, but they did that very thing down in Harwich Port Center with the market down there, which I love, by the way. I'm not knocking it, but they gave them what, if it came before us, would have required a variance for the height, exceeded the height limit in the bylaw. And they, they did it as an exception as part of this sub, not a subdivision, but whatever the development plan was.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with...
That doesn't, that's, we're getting off track here.
Let me, um...
I don't know. I go back to the Chair.
Yeah, let me just read something here. I just, I made an assumption.
...for variance in Board Appeals.
And then I'm going to, then I'm going to request the applicant to, to do your presentation. I'll read the whole paragraph. "Mr. Chagre, the move for the second Mr. Stoltz will approve with conditions, case number PB 2022-24, John Carey for use, special permit for multifamily use pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, 325-51-Q, for the property located at 5 Belknecks Road, map 10 parcel G1, in the RM zoning district. Based upon the aforementioned findings of the fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, the following conditions are imposed. A passing Title V inspection be submitted to the Health Department prior to any building permit approval. The decision shall be recorded at the Banceable Registry of Deeds, and the applicant will submit stormwater requirements within 60 days. They did not make a requirement to appear in front of this board." And they've approved this project as a, for a special permit of multifamily use.
Right. That's where I'm coming from. They approved the site plan.
And I, excuse me for a second. I will open up to discussion, if people after I get...
Well, sorry. So here's the conundrum that you're presenting us with. The, you know, seeking the opinion of Town Council is going to delay our project. I don't know how responsive Town Council is to requests like this. The, and we have another problem. We can't get a building permit from the building commissioner without a variance because he says we need a variance.
All right. He, you, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Why don't you continue your statement?
Perhaps you will provide a copy of his opinion?
But as Mr. Ryer pointed out, and as I started to comment earlier, the special permit of multifamily under the code is totally under the planning board's review. This Board does not, on any multifamily, we don't hear those cases. And according to the minutes of the meeting, the planning board approved this project without any condition to go in front of the Board of Appeals for setback relief. And they are sending in that approval into, you know, basically the land court, wherever, you know, records these, records the deeds.
Parcel registry of deeds, yeah.
The deeds. So, so the, and your application to appear in front of this Board happened, I believe, prior to, or did it, did you do it after you met with the planning board?
Well, once we get the planning board approval, we then consulted with the building commissioner because we'd been told by him informally that he thought, well, we have to apply for a building permit. You know, you're familiar with how the system works here in Harwich. If you want a building permit, you apply, and he says, you, sure, I'll give you a building permit. He says, oh, no, I can't give you a building permit because you have to go to the zoning Board of Appeals. And so we have a letter here that says that. So, so I have a question for you, Mr. Chair. We would like to proceed as expeditiously as possible, but the, so I guess the question is, when could we, we be heard again? I mean, how much is it going to delay us?
Okay. My, and I know Dave mentioned about consulting an attorney. I'm not quite sure if that's necessary because according to the planning board, they've approved the project.
Maybe you just need to talk to the building commissioner.
And I just need to, I just need to talk to the building commissioner. And I think after we hear all the public tonight in speaking, of course, we may change our opinions, but we need to hear, hear everyone's comments tonight. I will clarify the situation with the, the building commissioner and point out to him what's been approved by the planning board for the, for the zoning regulations. And at that point, he may reconsider his position. Now, if he, at that point insists that he's correct, yes, at that point, I will consult with the town attorney. Again, based upon we, how we move forward.
Right.
After listening to the public about, you know, any comments they have regarding the project.
Right.
But from my, from my point of view, the Chair's point of view, you don't need to be here.
Well, it's not that we don't love you.
I know, I realize that.
We'd rather be somewhere else, too.
Okay? All right? So, and again, the building commissioner is, is, you know, looking at, and he, he made a decision, I think, to, to cover all bases.
Well, he's, he's also a little on the new side, too.
Well, no, but regardless, he's, he's looking at it, saying, okay, there's a setback issue here, one that was pointed out at one point by the planning board, and his decision was, I guess you need next up, go see us. And, and that's, that's how I'm looking at it at the moment. But if, do you have any other party, you need to have, make sure you give your full presentation tonight, and then we can open up the discussion.
Just one more comment. If we're looking at the building commissioner's requirement, it's for a variance, so you, you can't go forward for a special permit in any event if you want to satisfy the building commissioner's...
I understand that. We're prepared to go forward on the variance request.
So you would have to, you know, justify the requirements or meet the requirements for the grant of a variance on this case.
Well, that's, that's correct, and we're prepared to make that presentation, but obviously, if we can avoid applying for a variance, we just won't do that. We'd just like to do it all expeditiously, that's all.
I, I would suggest if you're going to open it to the public, I think the applicant's entitled to make their presentation.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, okay.
So I want you to make your full presentation, and then after that, we're going to open up the meeting to the public for discussion. All right? And, and then we'll, we'll discuss this further as to what we think the next step is going to be.
Okay. So what I would, what I would suggest is, Mr. Carey would explain the proposal to you. I'll explain my variance argument. And then, so John would go first and explain the project to you.
Good evening. I'm John Carey. I bought the project back in June from the town of Harwich. They were looking for somebody to save the structure. I have a construction license. I renovate old buildings for a living, and I love Harwich. I live in Hyannis, and I just wanted to, you know, try to help out with a good, you know, an important old structure. They were asking for year-round housing. I know the situation we're dealing with. Most of my friends have nowhere to live in Cape Cod, and so they leave. So I tried to put together a project that would address that issue the best I could. So I was able to design and entitle out of pocket. I have no loans or anything on this project. 10 one-bedroom apartments that were basically going to be first offered to police, firefighters, nurses, essential people to the town. And everyone that's voted on the projects has been unanimous, so there's a lot of support for this. I've had all types of people call and comment and appreciate what we're trying to do. And it'd be a lot more profitable to turn it into a mansion or flip it or something else, but I want to do what's right for the town. So I think we have a great project, and, you know, it's sat there for 154 years where it is, and we're already replacing the foundation. There's a lot of risk in moving a structure and a lot of cost effective with that. So to move it nine feet just to appease, you know, a code or a bylaw seems unnecessary. So I'm hoping we can find a way around that and get this project going and build some housing because we need it badly.
So just considering the circumstances we're under here, let me just go briefly through the variance argument, and then we can move on. So through the variance requirement under the bylaw and under the state act is that there has to be a hardship arising out of the soil shape or topography of the property or structure. Tough to find topography in a structure, but the word "structure" is present there. That hardship should be unique to the property, now that it doesn't affect the zone generally where it's located, and that the relief can be granted without derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw and without substantial detriment to the public good. So that's the criteria. So, so the question is, where's the hardship? Well, the cost of lifting the structure, to put a new foundation under it, is actually pretty modest. The cost of lifting the structure and moving it is substantially more. So there's a significant financial hardship related to bringing that building, as John said, six feet over, to come into compliance with the setback. So that would be our, the financial part of our argument. The, you know, because the building's been there for a long time, the continuation of the, of the building at that location certainly does not cause any public detriment, doesn't really derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw, which has been there for 150 years. So the, the, so I think that, you know, there is a substantial financial cost to shifting the building. There's also candidly a risk to the safety of the structure. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an old building, and the, I think the end result of John's work is going to, it's going to be a much more stable building and have a new foundation. It'll be structurally more sound from the work that John's doing inside it. But that work can't be done until after the building's moved, and we think there's a substantial risk that in addition to the increased cost of moving it, that the building may actually end up being damaged so that it can't be reused. And so those are our two concerns, which we think rise to the level of a hardship for a building where we don't, it's one of those things where you might think, well, that's not much of a hardship. Well, you know, the building's been there for 60, 130 years, so we don't think, you know, there's any harm to the, to the public. And so when dealing with dimensional variances, our Supreme Judicial Court has indicated that the, the determination of a substantial hardship when it's a, when it's a minor dimensional requirement, particularly whereas here, there are no structures on the adjacent property in close proximity to our property line. So I think that, again, we, we have a hardship arising out of the condition of the building and the, we think that, you know, it's somewhere between $15,000 and $100,000 to move the building as opposed to just jacking it up. And the, it's obviously a condition that only applies to this lot and not to others generally in the neighborhood. And the, we think the relief can be granted without derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw and also without substantial public detriment. So that would be our position.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up the public discussion, I first want to point out, should there be a vote here tonight? People who will be voting on this case would be Al Dunne, myself, Dave Nunley, David Ryer, and Timothy Bailey. Okay? Questions from the Board to the applicant? David?
I have no questions. I have no questions at this time.
The, I have no questions either. I only think, I did have a couple of questions regarding, your, your whole plan calls for Phase 2, for another three, three-unit development.
Right.
But that is not coming for our Board here because the setbacks to that, that building is going to be fine, and the Board, the planning Board has already approved...
Right.
...that, that structure. And I believe also you will be meeting again with the planning Board regarding lighting as well as, all right, what's, what's...
Right, we'll be submitting a lighting plan...
Plan.
And a planting plan.
Planning plan.
Those are already approved. I'll be following up with drainage calculations per, you know, mass and Harwich requirements. That's the main thing they're waiting on.
Okay. All right. So that, those things are in the, in the works, and it's something which the planning Board...
Yep.
...is going to be seen for review.
Yep.
Okay.
Next week.
All right.
Dave? You're going to access the property off of Belknecks Road?
That's correct.
Belknecks Road? And is the parking area currently paved?
The property has substantial pavement. We'll be reducing the pavement overall, and yes, it is paved, but it will be replaced.
Okay, reducing the pavement?
Yep.
And you haven't jacked it up yet?
We haven't touched it. I patched the holes in the roof that the town left me.
Okay. And I believe Attorney Riley said the cost to move it would be neighborhood $50,000 to $100,000?
It's, it's a lot.
Okay.
There's a reason people don't move buildings.
I'm, I'm sorry?
There's a reason people don't move buildings. You always tear them down.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and I do appreciate the comments about danger to the structural integrity on a move of a building this old. That's all I have. Tim?
No questions at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. I will now ask for comments or questions from the public, and anybody like to be recognized? Okay? If you could take your position there, I appreciate it, and if you could indicate your name, please. Identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Dalmas. I'm an attorney with Sennion Associates, 15 Cape Lane in Brewster, and I am here representing Alan Longton, who owns Unit 11 in the Pinewood... Alan Longton, who owns Unit 11 in the Pinewood Village condominium, which is next door to the property. So I, just as a starting point, I do agree with the building commissioner, and I'll explain.
Could you just give us a little more volume, please?
Sure. How do I do that?
No, just speak up a little louder. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, okay.
I'm having trouble picking you up.
So just as a starting point, we're, we are in the world of lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming uses and structures. The zoning bylaw does indeed, as the board has concluded, give, gives the planning board the jurisdiction over the use part of the equation. So the planning board, further to the zoning bylaw, focused on the use, the change of the use, to the multifamily use. But when you're in the world of lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structures and uses, you also have another part of the equation, which is structures. And the planning board does not, under the zoning bylaw, have jurisdiction over determining whether or not a special permit or variance is applicable when an applicant wants to alter or extend a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And I point out to zoning bylaw, Section 325-51, which specifically says, "The Board of Appeals shall have the authority to hear and decide applications for all changes, alterations, or extensions of a non-conforming structure." Now, if you look to the separate carve-out for the planning board in relation to multifamily use conversion, you will see that that's not relevant to structures. And if you look at the case law that covers non-conforming uses and structures, in this universe of lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structures and uses, you do have to look at these as two distinct universes. So I do recommend that this is continued, and that you do seek guidance from Town Council, but my belief is that this board does have jurisdiction, not over the use. The use has already been decided. But it does have jurisdiction to opine on whether a special permit or variance is relevant to firstly, the request to alter and extend the existing structure, the old schoolhouse, I understand, and secondly, in relation to the Phase Two part of the project, which relates to the addition of an entirely new building at the subject premises. So an entirely new structure. So that is my conclusion, though I do recommend that this board continues and seeks guidance from Town Council. But to continue, so as I mentioned, here we have a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. That's an historical schoolhouse. Now, there was mention in the application of the Gale case, and that case focuses on single-family and two-family lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structures. They are in their own special universe, and when you're in that universe, you can look at applying what's called, well, special permitting, but first you would do a Section Six finding to determine if the proposed structural alteration or extension is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now here, we don't have a single or two-family residential structure. We have a non-residential structure that is being proposed to convert to a multifamily use structure. So there are two requirements that, that would need to be met under Mass. General Law's 48, Section Six, and as well the corresponding provision in the bylaw, and those two requirements are firstly, the Section Six finding, which is the not substantially more detrimental finding, and secondly, that it has to comply with the bylaw. This is where the building inspector looked at the relevant section in the bylaw covering lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structures, and said to himself, I mean, I'm speculating, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't set out the detail, but he looked at it and said, "Well, within the, the bylaw, this technically, because the proposal with the existing schoolhouse structure is to not only alter the structure," which is a term of art defined in the bylaw and defined in the case law, "but also extend the structure." So they're proposing to increase the mass of the building within the setback area. Now, if they weren't doing that, if they were just taking the existing building and converting it, they, they, they should, they should be able to have a good argument for a special permit. But because there's this expansion of the mass, which of course impacts density and open space, that's why they're triggering the variance requirement with the existing plan for that building. Secondly, the proposal to add an entirely new building, an entirely new structure, also absolutely needs a variance. And that's, again, due to the application of 48, Section Six, the state law, and the local bylaw. If you look at, in the world of lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming structures, the state law and the zoning bylaw allows you to alter or extend the structure. Again, those are, those are defined. The creation of an entirely new building is not an alteration or an extension of an existing structure. And you can look at the definitions in your bylaw.
Okay, Counselor, just that additional building is not before us tonight.
Yes. I had thought that both buildings were before special permitting.
The only thing before us is, my understanding, the alteration of the existing building.
Right. The, so Phase Two is not being presented to the
Okay.
Appeals Board tonight?
Okay, I stand corrected. I just hope that that would be something that, if it is going to be pursued, that the applicant goes back before this board. I think that's really the key thing.
Not tonight, it might be ultimately, we don't know.
Sorry? Lastly, I'll just note that the variance standards, and I think the board's already made note of this, are quite stringent, and I have not heard in the argument that the, the basis for this is substantiated based on unusual and unique soil shape or topographical conditions of this property. Also, I note that the hardship sounds more like a personal hardship, given the costs involved in what is proposed. That does not meet the requirement. And then lastly, the variance standards also look to, well, maybe you can't do all your wish list, but can you achieve a reasonable development here? And I think, again, a pared-back development, leveraging the existing structure without expanding the mass of it into the non-conforming setback, is an achievable, good result, I think, for the neighbors, for my client, and also would achieve the good purposes that are intended here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney, just, I missed, I'm just trying to find it. You first cited on 325-51, which section did you initially discuss as far as
325-51 gives the Board of Appeals
Which Q, I mean, which, which section of that? There's several paragraphs.
I have the excerpt. I don't have the full
It's right at the beginning, where it says, "Who has jurisdiction?" And she's correct, I mean, that's what the bylaw says. This board has jurisdiction. It's, where is it? We have jurisdiction, yes, on 325-51, really the first paragraph, first sentence, "The Board of Appeals has jurisdiction on non-conforming structures or uses." The next sentence says, "The planning board shall have authority to hear and decide all other applications for special permits." That's what she was quoting from.
And then if you look at the section that gives the planning board jurisdiction over multifamily use conversions, that is subsection Q?
Yeah, I was, I was reading that.
And that's relevant to uses. And again, the case law, including the Gale case that was cited in the application, makes very clear, as do the plethora of cases on, in the lawful, non-conforming world, that you do look at structures and uses. So if the planning board said, "Okay, you can do this use," you still have the structural part of the equation that, that I do believe is within the jurisdiction of this board.
But as I read that, and I was reading it, "The planning board shall serve as a special permit-grant authority for multifamily developments, including conversion of an existing structure slash uses to multifamily and/or new construction." So it's, it's saying here that they can oversee the gutting of that building and, and any type of structure inside that building that the applicant wants to do, and
But because it's a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming situation, it pulls the jurisdiction of the ZBA within oversight as well. If it weren't in a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming scenario, that would be, that would make a lot of sense, what you're saying.
I, I've said it very, very often at our board meetings, a lot of our provisions in the bylaw, at least on the face conflict, and this is another example, it's not clear. Yes, I know what 51, 325-51 says, but then we have the 51-Q, and it really is unclear whether that takes precedence and it includes non-conforming structures. It, it's not clear to me. That's why I suggested we go to Town Council. But I've moved my position, I, I understand your argument, but I think they need a variance
Yes.
if they're going to go forward. So I think none of that applies on special permits, because I think they need a variance. And we clearly have
I agree.
the authority to grant a variance on this petition if we think they meet the requirements.
Yes. And I, like I said, I agree with the building inspector that this, this does trigger, because they want to expand the mass of the building within the existing non-conforming setback, that would be the result, that it triggers, it's not, it, it triggers, it triggers the variance requirement. And that's based on a technical reading that the building commissioner did in, in the bylaw itself, which, which states that it doesn't conform to the setback.
No, I, I understand. I'm not sure I agree with his position, as I said earlier, though, in the face of 51-Q. Again, the whole thing is sort of unclear, and it's unfortunate, but the bylaw over the years has been amended and not in a uniform fashion. When we've amended it as a town, we haven't always gone back through to make sure all the other provisions that might underface, appear to be conflicting, have been melded into one unit. So, but I do think
I, I hear, yeah.
they need a variance, and I think this board does have jurisdiction to grant one if they, we feel they meet the requirements. So I appreciate your arguments, but I don't think it's a special permit case.
I, I agree with you. It's not a special permit situation. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Is there anyone else that wants to be heard regarding this case? Yes.
Hello, Marie Gunnerson, also at Pinewood Village, Unit Nine, adjacent.
Just speak up, please, ma'am.
Speaking up, okay. I appreciate the previous discussion, so I don't think I can add anything to that. And I know that this isn't the planning board, but I heard that, I think it was the secretary mentioning that the Historical Commission sought to maintain the foundation, and the applicant talked about replacing it. I know, I just wanted to
Sure. If I could just jump in on that for one second, and I apologize, but to interrupt you. I'm going back over it. The, we have a, a note from the Historic Commission that the, which they, the Bell Neck HH 2022-23 to demo the foundation has been approved, and they'll be back in February to get additional approval for adding windows and relocating the door. So actually, the Historic, the Historic Commission has approved the replacement of the foundation.
Did you agree to put brick?
Okay.
That was confusing.
Yeah, and I understand. So just wanted to just clarify that. That was a fair and upright, okay?
I believe I understand the applicant's arguments for remain, you know, keeping the building where it is. But something I just wanted to raise in regards to the applicant's attorney's argument, that it's always been there, it really hasn't caused any harm. I wanted to mention that while that building's been there, even when it was in use, it was occasional use. So the setback was, that's when that building was, you know, used occasionally for school use, town use, and now it's going to be continuous use. And I don't know if that has any impact on the setback requirements. But I fully understand the applicant's position on retaining the building. But I want to mention that there is a difference, even though the building's always been there, the building's use is changing from occasional use to continuous use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I make a comment? I, I appreciate the comments, but if we made them move back, that wouldn't affect the use. They could still do what they're proposing. It would just cost them another $50,000 or $100,000.
But maybe just a little bit
No, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, it just, it's not going to affect
The use.
the use.
I understand.
If they meet the setbacks.
But I just wanted to make that point, that if the use is changing
Appreciate that.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this case? And if you may indicate
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Arthur Bowden, Harwich, Town of Harwich, housing advocate. I'm getting a good education here tonight. Thank you. And I'm, I'm not addressing my, to, to the Donnybrook that's going on up here, wherever. I'm going to address my comments to basically two things. The first thing is, I haven't heard the word "housing" at all. And, and I'm always amazed how people can be against housing, and they can come up with all kinds of ways to go around it without saying "housing," because they don't want to come out to be against housing. So we talked about setbacks, we talked about this, changing the, the shape of the building, the size of it, on and on and on. But the one thing we haven't talked about is housing. We're using, converting a structure, an existing structure in town, into housing. It's going to be used for a noble purpose, housing. I applaud Mr. Carey here. He's the only guy walking around Harwich right now with a shovel. We need housing, and, and I, and I know all the arguments have been said here, they have to be adjudicated. I, I'm not against that. Every, your board, I, I can see you, you've got a little thing going between you and the planning board. I, I think you can solve that problem somehow. It shouldn't be too many meetings. We, we talk about being a burden to Mr. Carey here. Every minute, every hour, every day that his application is being held up, it's costing him money. Not a few cents, money, real money. I mean, if you can, if you have any idea, the cost of housing right now is just staggering. It's gotten to the point where you hear comments about, people say, "Well, we don't have enough land." My comment is, we're going to run out of money before we run out of land because of the cost of the escalating price of housing. But that's getting, running astray. I'm just going to say it one more time. Housing. We need housing. Let's, let's bring the argument back into where it is. We're either for or against it, and let's, let's take care of the, the paperwork that we've got to take care of, and make sure everyone's happy. But let's go on and turn this property into housing that we definitely need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Oh, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Way, Stack of Harwich. And I agree with the attorney that you're talking about a variance, and Attorney Riley spoke eloquently about the hardship spoke eloquently about the hardship that this particular project faces. And I want to bring to light another hardship that you might want to consider tonight. Mr. Carey, when he first bought this building, made a commitment to the town and the Board of Selectmen that he would maintain this building. Those of you who are familiar with construction know it'd be much cheaper, much more inexpensive for him to tear the building down and start from scratch. Much easier to do. But he made a commitment, not only to the town, he made a commitment to the West Harwich Historic District, tried to maintain this building, to keep the integrity of that building. He made a commitment to the Harwich Historic Commission to do the same. He made it to the Board of Selectmen when they awarded him this property to be able to buy. He made a commitment to the Harwich Planning Board. And whether you have disagreements on how or why with the planning board or the building commissioner, he made commitments to preserve this structure. In addition to the basic economics for Mr. Carey, the hardship to not grant this tonight would be to the culture and to the history of this community. And for those who talk about uses of that building, I don't know how many remember back in the day that it was used as the recreation and youth building. And every day that was used, kids were there every day. Street hockey was played there. I was coaching back in those days, street hockey. With all due respect to the attorney who spoke, she represents a, a client who's been in this town less than six months, doesn't understand the culture and the history of this community. Mr. Bowden spoke eloquently about the housing crisis in this community. It has gotten to levels that are beyond belief. For people to buy a property in this community, you needed a combined income of $200,000 to buy the average property in this community. People are fleeing. We're seeing restaurants closed one and two days a week now, because they can't get staff, because they don't have a place to live. Three weeks ago, we did a housing huddle. We heard from Outer Cape Health, saying a doctor who they had hired couldn't stay in the community because they couldn't find housing. The superintendent of the schools spoke about teachers who were offered positions, who could not accept them, because they could not find housing in this community. The fire chief, David LeBlanc, spoke about the fire department having to change their residency requirement for this community, because firefighters, who were making good salaries in this community, could not afford to live in this community. Mr. Carey is proposing good market rate housing for this location. He's made a tremendous commitment to a lot of different boards, committees, and more so to the entire community of Harwich, that he would preserve this building in that site that's been there for many, many years. Most in this room tonight don't understand that culture and that history of this community. So I think there's far more of a hardship than just the economics to Mr. Carey and his project. But it's a hardship that will be borne by this entire community. Those of you who remember the Exchange Building in Harwich Center know what happened when it became too expensive to maintain that building. There's a granite structure that shows what the Exchange Building looks like. It's no longer there. So I would urge you, that you do have a right to issue a variance. I urge you to look at the hardships and to grant Mr. Carey this variance that you have a right to do, as the attorney pointed out so well, that you grant that variance tonight to allow him to begin to address the housing crisis in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard from the public?
Good evening. Bob Hundermark, 36 Pine Grove Road. I'm just down the street a little ways—
I'm sorry, Mr. Bob Hunter?
Hundermark, H-U-N-D-E-R-T-M-A-R-K, 36 Pine Grove Road.
Thank you, sir.
I think where the building inspector was getting at was the, the three, Section 325-54 nonconforming uses. We, we talked about 325-51, but 325-54, in particular, Paragraph 7B talks about changes in, in nonconforming uses or structures, and consistent with the Gale case, makes the distinction between one and two family uses and other uses, the other uses coming under Section 7B. And that's where the, I think, the variance requirement comes from. And that this is a, a change of a pre-existing, nonconforming structure. Number one, to expand it, they're not expanding the nonconformity per se, but it's a, it's a significant change to this historic structure, and it's also a change of use. And I think also, as, as Attorney Dolmas pointed out, under 48, Section 6, a change of use of a pre-existing, nonconforming structure, even to a permitted use, but a change of use of a pre-existing, nonconforming structure also comes under Section 6, you know, which would, which would require the Section 6 finding, that it's, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, et cetera. And I would suggest that the, the, the problems that, that I've heard people express with this project are really kind of one of scope, you know, and that the, the intent and perhaps, you know, I'm not familiar with the long history, but, you know, I have, I have lived here, you know, for some time, and, and I've looked at the history of the structure and the wrangling with the town meetings about the votes about selling this, and, and the intent, you know, to preserve some benefit for the citizens of Harwich, and arts and culture, et cetera. And then, you know, when this, this most recent sale came up, there was a, a commitment, which, which Mr. Daley's honoring, to preserve the structure, you know, and I, I mean, I would suggest that putting, putting a shed on this is, is really kind of altering the historic nature of the structure, which was kind of what people were concerned about at the time of they approved the sale. And that if you take that and you look at the Section 6 finding about the detriment to, to the neighborhood, and this is, this is a change of use to a pre-existing, nonconforming structure, and, and, you know, is that change of use substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I would suggest that, you know, based upon the scope that we're looking at here, you know, probably is. But if, if they could, would scale back, you know, the project, and I, you know, I hear this discussion of Phase 2, which I understand is not before the board tonight, but nevertheless, this is a question of economics. To make the thing work, he thinks he needs 10 units, and he's putting a big shed dormer on it, you know, and I would suggest that to be consistent with what is, you know, a quiet neighborhood, and bordering up on, on all those acres of conservation land in Bellsneck, that, you know, perhaps, in considering a Section 6 finding, in issuing a variance in this case, you know, perhaps change of use is substantially more detrimental to, to the neighborhood and, and ought to be scaled back. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you speaking. Yes, sir?
Just one more brief item. In terms of more detrimental to the neighborhood, the abutting parcels next door, there are 16 units abutting this property on two acres. So it's really not more detrimental in any way. It actually is consistent with the direct abutters in the Pine Knoll condos. If you, if you've visited there, you'll see, there are 16 units there. It's not more detrimental to this neighborhood.
You know, just to move things along, more detrimental to the neighborhood doesn't apply. That applies to special permits. We need to look at a variance here. I don't believe we have any standing to issue a special permit in this case.
No, but I think we may, in fact, have a standing to do a variance.
On that, on that one mansion, there may be 16 units. A couple of them are little tiny things that are not used at all, except for overnight. And having them are occupied only occasionally. Most of the time, they're empty.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me—
Mr. Point of order?
Go ahead.
I don't believe these comments are being recorded if she's not at the microphone.
No, you're absolutely correct. Thank you very much.
I was just trying to be fast.
No, no, I, no, it's—
I didn't want to interrupt. So to repeat, it's Marie Gunnison, Unit 9, Bellsneck. And the comment was made that there are 16 units next door on two acres, and that is, that's true. However, two of those units are, are very tiny. They abut one person's unit and only use when the kids come down. The other, the other units, about half of them remain unoccupied 90% of the time and are unoccupied in the winter. So while there are 16 units, if you go over there, you'll see that there's, it's, it's virtually empty most of the time. There are several units that have been converted to year-round use, so maybe half of the units. I just wanted, I, that was just a point I wanted to make.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other comments, or anyone who wants to speak to this application?
Can I just make a—
Yes, yes, attorney. Please do.
So, so I, I do want to say that the objectives in mind here are good objectives. So my representation of Mr. Longton is not to degrade the objectives here. He is a seasonal resident, but he cares about this town. The, the key issue here is, I still have not heard argumentation that supports a variance. And to change the, the bylaw, to go against the bylaw, it's more appropriate for town meeting to act upon this. The hardship is, again, it's not related to soil, topography, or shape. I am hearing hardships in relation to development, financial aspects to it, but there is the ability to renovate this historical building, as it is, and position units. There's the ability to maybe not have all one-bedroom units. You could probably do a mix of studios and one-bedrooms. So it's not a situation, this is also important for the variance analysis, it's not a situation where there, it's impossible to be able to renovate the existing structure without expanding it and make it work at this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, Robert Hundermark again. There was this question on, on variances and special permits, and I directed you to the, to the variance section that I believe the building inspector was looking at. And then there was some discussion about the jurisdiction of, of the Board of Appeals versus the planning board with regard to this project. And honestly, looking at the, the bylaw, I think there is a special permit requirement here. There's a, certainly is a special permit requirement under, under 325-51-Q, which is the planning board with respect to multifamily dwellings. But the very beginning, which I think Mr. Chairman pointed out, of this Section 325-51, rests the jurisdiction with the Board of Appeals to hear and decide applications for all changes, alterations, or extensions of nonconforming structures or uses that require a special permit, and for the certification of existing dwellings under 51P. But, you know, in this case, I think there are two special permits that we're looking at, the 51-Q special permit on a multifamily dwelling, and the 325-51 general special permit jurisdiction for which rests with the Board of Appeals, in that the Board of Appeals shall have authority to hear and decide applications for changes, alterations, or extensions to a pre-existing, nonconforming structure, which is what we're talking about here. So I, you know, I think that's where the Section 6 finding comes in.
I'd like to move to close the public hearing, but I think the applicant should be allowed to respond first.
Absolutely. Before I close the public hearing, I'd like to have the applicant, if you'd like to be, one more time, say, discuss what you've heard from the public and give you a viewpoint. I'd appreciate it.
I think the, you know, our statutes regarding variances are, have been described in language, and have been described as infelicitous. You know, the, the, you know, the reliance of the neighbors here on the words soil shape or topography really missed the mark, because it's, it says of the land, and goes, or structure. Well, you know, that means that, you know, we clearly don't have topography for a structure, you know, but we do have shape and, and use in the, the, and, you know, this case law that indicates that when, when dealing with a dimensional variance regarding setbacks for buildings that have been in place, the level of hardship need not be a great one. And the, the, and here, bringing the building into compliance, there is a financial hardship in the cost of moving the building, but there's, and there's also another risk, which is, you know, the condition of the building and the possibility of damaging the building in the move. I think that's all a grist for your mill in terms of considering whether or not a variance is appropriate here. The, certainly, we're dealing with a unique situation, which is required for a variance. There's clearly no public detriment. It's already been determined as an appropriate use by the planning board, and something you can rely on. And, and the, and the, and because the town has recently amended its bylaw regarding multifamily, you know, you know, it's clearly not a derogation of the purpose and intent of the bylaw. So the, you know, the modest changes that John is proposing to the building are really very much in keeping with the structure of that age. You know, we, we all deal a lot with historic buildings, and if you ask an historic preservationist, you know, the, you know, these historic buildings aren't frozen in amber, not capable of being changed. It's a question, what's the, what's the nature of the change? And so the, in a building of this age, how would they make a change back in 1890 or 1910? Well, they'd, they'd put a dormer on it. They needed more room. So the changes that John has proposed are really very much in keeping with the standards that preservationists are intent on applying to these antique structures. Mr. Waystack was eloquent in, in the housing, and we hope that carries some weight, but we know that it's, it's not a zoning issue. But, you know, we have a lot of, you know, and that's why I say, and I'll, I'll get you a, a case on it, that when you're dealing with a minor dimensional variance, the, the burden, the hardship, is not a heavy one. And the, I think it is fair for you to consider the fact that the planning board has granted the special permit allowing the multifamily use. The, and the housing advocates, you know, and John's commitment to the Board of Selectmen all have to factor into that in their, you know, the, the, in order for this to be successful, in other words, for the building to continue to exist, you know, it has to make economic sense. And that's not, you know, that's not personal. That's how do we preserve this structure? Well, you modify it so that it can continue to exist and support A, the property owner, and B, the people who are going to live there. So the, I think you're, I think you're wise in referring the matter to the town council and reviewing the matter with the, the building commissioner. Before you do that, in the event that, you know, he, he does reconsider his position, we just hope that we can be rescheduled as soon as possible because it's, you know, every day delayed means there's less housing for police, fire, and teachers that John's trying to provide for the town. Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, I have a second. All right, so move. Now we're going to entertain discussion, members of the board.
No, we have to vote on the motion to close.
Oh, excuse me, you're absolutely right. I, I have a motion. You have the motion? Let's have closed public meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public meeting is closed. All right, now discussion by the board.
I've heard the word change of use. This building was built in 1917, excuse me, 1890, I gather. I would say numerous changes of use in this building over that many years. I haven't been in this community as long as many of the people in the audience. I've been here quite a number of years now. And that property was a school. It apparently was a, an area for children to play after the school closed down, and they've used it for recreation. It's had multiple uses, just within my period of time living here. And I don't feel as though it has any detrimental, is not detrimental to the neighborhood. And with regard to the hardship, moving that property or that building is a significant, I know it's financial, however, I also think it has to do with the Historical Commission also agreeing that it must be moved. I think it frankly beats the requirement of a variance.
Thank you, Al. I don't, after discussions so forth here tonight, I feel there's, there's reasons why this board can discuss a variance, all right, and we want to review that. If the, and again, typically in variances, we focus on land conditions, but only if the circumstance is related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures. Now, the shape of the structure comes into play here, and, and I think that the, yeah, I could read it that way, and I think I easily, because that's how it reads. What is the shape of the structure? The shape of the structure is such that I would agree, there's an old building, potential hardship, damage that could be done by, by moving the building, lifting it, and placing it on a new located foundation. So I, I can see where, basically, and given the hardship of the situation as we get into, you know, can be substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner applicant. This petitioner has gone foot on this project at the urging of the town to, to change the direction we're going in now regarding this, this project going forward at a reasonable timeframe. You know, we're, the town has, has led this, this applicant on this path to, to build a multifamily situation. The planning board has approved it. And, and given for, you know, as I read, think for variance, the fact that the conditions of the structure comes into play. And I feel that, that since we're not expanding the setbacks at all, you know, and, and as Al pointed out, this used to be a school, we got in touch with the neighborhood, I, you know, I, I think that the amount of people that are going to be on that lot, the amount of traffic on that lot is actually substantially less than what would have existed as a school. So you consider the fact of, of disrupting the neighborhood, going from, you know, dozens of children and families and teachers and cars and that kind of traffic situation in the neighborhood, down to now having, you know, a, a seven-unit building is actually a substantial change in, in many, in many ways to the, to the benefit of the neighborhood versus this, it had remained a school. So I do think that we have a, an opportunity here tonight where we could consider a variance. Right?
Yeah, I had initially started with the comment that we should go to town council, but after hearing all the discussion, I, I think that's not what we should do. I happen to agree that they meet the requirements for a variance, and I think rather than delay the project and make them spend money fruitlessly, we should take a vote on a variance. I agree with your comments on the structure. I agree with Attorney Riley's comments on dimensional variances. And if you look at the plan, it's less than five feet, the biggest infringement into the setback. And on the other side, they're at 19.32. So what's that, seven inches into the setback?
Right.
And the courts are pretty clear, Attorney Riley is right, that they give a lot of deference, a lot more deference, and a lot less need for hardship where it's a dimensional variance. On the other hand, there are a lot of cases that would say $50,000 to $100,000 additional costs would qualify for a legitimate financial hardship. I, I agree that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. We've had several speakers testify, and, and, you know, it's in the paper weekly of the need for housing, and this actually would benefit the public good in that sense, to get some additional rental units in town. It's certainly not going to nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw because the planning board said the project meets the requirements of the bylaw it set forth in 325-51-Q, dealing with multifamily developments. So I, I think this board can properly approve a variance, and that we should do it tonight. I do think we need our general condition, and maybe a condition that just, that they meet all of the conditions imposed by the planning board and the other commissions that have weighed in on this project.
I think as a general condition, you refer to the fact that for life of, of the approved project, all construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property, not on any public street.
Well, we should do that also, yeah. There's plenty of room on this property for their construction vehicles.
Yes, I agree. That's all I have. Tim?
Great, yeah, thank you. I've got a couple of questions for Brian or Dave for the board, but I just want to say first, I think you're doing, you know, a great job. We definitely need housing, and Mr. Waystack eloquently kind of explained what's going on in this town. He mentioned that some of the restaurants were closed, you know, one to two times a day. I actually think sometimes they're only open one to two times a day. And, you know, there's Joey's Pizza and Dennis', they were never open. But there really is a problem that needs to be addressed. Just a couple of questions for the board. So financial hardship, because of cases come before, and the, when the applicant was kind of going down that line of financial hardship, and we kind of, the board spoke and said, we're not going to consider financial hardship. So I'm just a little confused on when we're considering financial hardship versus not.
I don't think we said that. I think financial hardship is a requirement to grant a variance.
So we can't consider the financial?
Well, we have to, yeah. I mean, we have to under the statute. And the financial, it's got to be, well, it's one, it's got to be hardship, financially or otherwise. In this case, I think it would be financial. I mean, I just had some property work done, and to do this for 50 or 100 grand, to move that structure is probably in the ballpark, and it would probably be closer to 100 than 50, and that, a lot of court decisions have said that amount of additional expenditure if the variance is not granted would be a hardship, a financial hardship to the applicant. So I think they do meet that requirement. I'm sorry, did I answer?
No, yeah, you did just fine.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Obviously, we need a motion. But do you want me to take a stab at this, or?
No, no, I'll make the motion. You got that sheet?
Yeah, but we need to, it's, it's, because I originally did a draft based upon a special, a special permit. So we need, need to. I need to state whether or not it's, it's going to be here or something. Well, I'm going here for an actual, actual issue of the structure itself. You want me to try it? Want to give it a shot? Were you all set?
Okay, I'll move that in case number 2023-02, John W. Carey, 56, Cook Circle, Hyannis, Mass. 02601. Be granted a special permit.
Oh, a variance.
I'm sorry, be granted a variance to change the use of the existing structure to a multifamily use and create habitable space within the setback on a pre-existing non-conforming structure pursuant to the Harwood zoning bylaws and MGL Chapter, Section 10. Property is located at 5 Belzneck Road, Assessors Map 10, Parcel G1 in the RM zoning district. The board makes this grant by finding that the structure, that the shape of the structure, historic structure, is unique and that there is a danger that in a moving of the structure to come within current setbacks, there could be damage to the structure. The board finds that there is a substantial financial hardship that the applicant would have to bear if the variance were not granted and the applicant had to relocate the building, move the building to comply with current setback requirements. The board further found or finds there's no substantial detriment to the public good if it grants the variance, and that the granting of the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the purpose or intent of the bylaw. The board finds that this condition is specific to the property and does not generally affect the district in which the property is located. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. The variance is granted subject to the following conditions. One, all conditions for a site plan special permit, which have been approved by the Harwood Planning Board, case number PB 2022-24, shall apply pursuant to the code of the town of Harwood, 325-55. Two, that during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. Three, it's a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this variance may be enforced as a violation of the Harwood zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Harwood zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion by the board? Okay. All right, I can vote on the motion?
Wait a minute, just give me one second.
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
It's over.
Okay. Entertained, motion, the motions have been made and seconded. I'd like to have a vote on motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approves. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for participating.
It was a good session.
Thank you guys very much.
Very helpful.
I appreciate it.
Yes, good luck.
I appreciate it.
You want your plans back?
I have so many copies from all the different things.
Okay, we could autograph one for you, I mean, you know.
Crazy. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, if I just get myself organized here, John, and. Okay. Al, can you call on the next case?
Case number 2023-03, John D. Barone and Karen D. Gagny. Jeff James C. Knockcross Esquire representing. The owner of the property is located, the owner of the property is the Gagny Baron folks, 14 Atlantic Street, Assessors Matt. 6B Parcel L140 in an RH2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to raise and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Harwood zoning bylaw 325-54 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10. Included in this is a a statement relative to the property. It says, let that go by the board. The second one is from the, Mr. Christopher Nickerson, who represents the Highway Department. And there's a concern relative to the location of the property on the corner of Pine Street. And I'll just read it. Do you have a copy, counsel, of this?
I do. Would you like me to introduce ourselves before we?
No, we're just, we're first, we're still reading, it will only be in a minute.
Oh, sure, no, no problem. Yeah, I do have a copy, though, Mr. John, thank you.
All right, let me just read this for the record. I am writing concerning the above-mentioned application, the plan showing the existed proposed building being anywhere within .14 feet and .41 feet of town property. Within the road are placed, the owners, the owners placed at risk should you decide to use a variance to the property owners for this project. WP, the WPW cannot be held liable for damage caused during this process. With the narrow road layup that exists in this neighborhood and the growing unpredictability of the weather, any loss of the area to place snow detriment to. of the weather. Any loss of the area to place snow detriment to our task." They've attached a Google map reference to this property showing the current conditions. And with the property being on the corner, we are hopeful the landscape changes can be considered as part of the project. And attached is a Google map blow-up of the corner of Pine Street and Atlantic Street.
Okay. Couple other things. The Historic Commission is holding back their decision until March after they hear from the zoning board. Okay. The zoning board had no comments. And the, go back here, the Board of Health, obviously, they weighed in regarding, I guess in the, in two thousand and three, the Board of Health had approved removal of the FAST system on the septic system. And with the condition to be no increase into the square footage of the dwelling or increase in bedrooms, therefore, you'll need to apply for reconsideration of, of various conditions by the Board of Health at a monthly meeting to demonstrate there is no increase in square footage of the building. Otherwise, you're required to be, they're going to require you to reinstall a FAST system. Does everyone on the board here know what a FAST system is?
Yes, my question is, where is it located?
Uh, under the driveway.
Okay. Dave, you know, you were, okay, Tim?
I do not.
All right, so a FAST system, and again, I'm just, just a brief knowledge here. It basically, it basically conditions the waste before it gets into the septic system. And one reason for it, and there's a, is to, I guess, provide more oxygen, whatever, to try to eliminate more nitrogen before it goes into the septic system. And this system has to be in a FAST system typically, I believe, has to be inspected three or four times a year, you know, to make sure it's operating properly. Okay? It had been approved, and I checked with the Board of Health on this, it had been approved for removal back in two thousand and three because the current owner was highly ever at the property. And given the fact that they weren't going to plan on changing habitable space and they aren't frequently, the board approved at that time. But you'll need to go before the Board of Health, again, guide in the FAST system, our approvals.
Our clients have engaged with a, a design contractor for that. Everybody's just out delayed. So, but that is on their list to go to the Board of Health.
So anyways, those are all the comments from various departments in the town. And now it, I request the applicant to, to introduce yourselves and, and, who we have at the table.
Great, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Jamie Norcross. I'm the attorney for the owners and applicants, John Barone and Karen Gagny. With me this evening is Jack Wishart, who is the architect for the project. To start, I'm happy to report, it's a single-family dwelling, so we're certainly within your purview tonight, so we don't need to answer that question. The, uh, so, I'll just give you a bit of background, and then I'm going to kick it over to Jack, who's going to run through a little bit of the design for you. Our clients purchased this property this past November with the eventual goal of making the house their permanent residence. Given the age, configuration, and condition of the existing structure, John and Karen began exploring options for either renovating the existing structure or a raise and rebuild. For a number of reasons, the raise and rebuild became the more feasible option. The applicants worked with Jack to try and come up with a design that essentially keeps the new structure within the footprint of the existing building while creating more and larger living area for use by my clients and their family. In terms of nonconformities, the lot, just, which I assume just about all the other lots down in this neighborhood, is vastly non-conforming as to size. It's a forty-thousand square feet required. Our lot is just under two thousand square feet, which is about the same size as most of the lots down there. The existing house is also non-conforming as to setbacks in coverage. The proposed structure, as I mentioned, will essentially be located in the same footprint as existing structure with a slight expansion at the rear of the property to sort of square it off along the rear property line. The setbacks will essentially remain unchanged. While the coverage calculation is increasing for building coverage and site coverage by about seven percent, when you're dealing with a lot this small, it only represents an increase of about a hundred and thirty square feet to get up to that seven percent pretty quickly. In terms of its height, the proposed structure will be about four and a half feet higher than the existing structure, but will still be about four and a half feet lower than the maximum building height allowed under your zoning bylaw. I drove around the neighborhood again today, and, and it's certainly, there's a vast collection of designs and structures in this neighborhood. There's some of the original designs and structures like my client's property here, and there's a number that have been rebuilt over the course of years as you drive along. We think that this design is in keeping with the size and characteristics of the other homes in the neighborhood and is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. One housekeeping matter, Mr. Chairman, just to point out, the, we were at the Historical Commission in January originally. They asked for some revisions. We went back with revised plans in February last week, which they approved. And that also required a modified site plan, which was prepared the end of last week. I was not able to file those with the town until Tuesday. So I understand you may not have...
We all have copies of them.
You've got copies of those?
Yes.
Okay. I'd suggest to you the changes are rather minor between the two plans. There's a decrease in the height on the new plan of, by about ten and a half inch, ten and a half inches of the ridge height. And the new plans, there's some changes in the design of the structure, including some porticos that were added over some doorways on the east and west side of the building. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would just have Jack run through, if I may, some of the design of the new structure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time reviewing our package. Our clients, John and Karen, have asked us to update the existing three-season cottage circa nineteen-ten for year-round use as their permanent residence. Our design priority was to use the existing foundation and maximize the usable square footage of the new build while also maintaining historic appropriateness and blending with the neighborhood aesthetic. The new build provides for a front-facing gambrel with a full second floor, and basement finishes with egress. To make the most of the existing foundation, we'd like to square off the structure at the northwest corner. In order to limit ground disturbance there, we plan to use concrete piers and grade beams, so right up along the property line there, as opposed to excavating, pouring a new wall, or adding to the full-height basement. There were some questions regarding the landscaping. The hydrangea plantings at the south elevation would be existing to remain. They're there right in the front. And the plantings at the west and north are on the Abutters property, so no additional plantings would be proposed there. There is a cedar lattice fence that would be removed, and the new fence would be installed in line with the rear foundation. There's also a split rail fence along Pine Street on the right side, on the east, east side, that is over the property line. That would be removed, and new fences planned for running along the property line. There was also further comment from the Board of Health, who I was in contact with back in November, and their request was to re-engineer with an innovative alternative technologies septic system. And that is currently under design right now for health review. Thank you again for your time and happy to address any questions from the board.
Thanks.
David?
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions.
I got a couple. First of all, what is the, just out of my own knowledge here, and I know what a FAST system is, what, what is the alternative energy?
Innovative alternative?
Yeah.
I believe it's just another name for the FAST system.
Okay, all right.
So it's, it's, you're right, it's a quarterly inspection.
It would be a redesigned and updated system.
Okay.
It's got an alarm on it, I believe, generally.
There are additional noise dampeners, stuff that they've come up with. I admit, I'm not a septic expert. That was the direction that Health sent us in.
Okay.
But you're just, on that subject, is this one of the new systems that the state is thinking about requiring for nitrogen reduction?
I think it's quite possible.
Probably not, because the, the state's looking at, on a standard kind of septic system, they're worried about. This one's a, this is a, this is a... Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was the same. No, I'm guessing, because this is a pretreatment system.
Okay.
That, now, once it gets into the tank, that could come under the, what the state wants you to do anyways, under the new, so there's, there's two parts here. There's the pretreatment, and then there's, once it's in the tank, how that's handled.
Right.
All right, so I have a, I have a basic problem on the review of this application. Now, I have no idea how the, the current building was ever approved to be residing on town property. Now, excuse me?
I don't think it was town property at the time this was built. It could be incorrect in that way.
I have no idea, but it's, it's now, it is now on, however it happened. Now, I, I mean, it could have been that it was approved one way, and then when the contractor put the building up, he got a foot or so front than he expected to. No idea, all right?
Yeah.
But it does exist, the fact that the current house is residing on town property. And I haven't seen, you know, again, I haven't seen any documentation that outlines how this, how this building became situated on town property. But now that it is, speaking as, not as a chairman, but as an individual member here, I don't know how this board has the authority to approve a construction on town property. I, I, I do, I do appreciate the fact that, should have been an issue, why, how, how it's existed, and it's been there for years, perhaps, on the existing house, making sure that that doesn't have to be moved. But on a tear-down, rebuilding on town property, which is also going to mean digging into the town streets for, for footings and so forth, you know, I, it, I don't see where this, with the Gale case, you know, regarding special permits, allows us to make a decision on construction on town property. And that's, that's a, that's a stumbling block for me. I don't know about anybody else, but it is for me. And I don't feel that any portion of the new construction should be within a foot or more, a foot or so, given the, the width of a footing of, of town property.
Well, it's sort of an interesting conundrum. And then I'll, I'll give you a little bit of color that I learned, because I had the same question, how is this ever located in the, in the right of way. And apparently, so the subdivision's based on a nineteen-twenty's plan that has all these square lots that, and the lots really aren't square. So it's very confusing in terms of the road location. The town did a taking plan. I don't remember the exact date. It was never actually recorded at the registry, which is highly unusual, but it's on file with the assessors. And so the surveyors go and look at that. And so I'm assuming that the building was in its location, and the taking was done by the town, and this property, and I'm guessing there are a number of other properties, improvements are actually located within the town layout based on that plan. The conundrum comes in where we would just be leaving the foundation where it is. That's why we're proposing the location, because we're not going to touch the foundation. If we are to move it back, as you suggested, that is going to then require us to excavate on town property to get rid of that foundation or that section of the foundation.
Well, it's, it's the, all right, so you have the, the main structure itself, which on your application, you showed it, you know, six feet or so from the, from the lot line, and then with a notation, the fact that the porch goes into the street. Now, the main foundation is over six feet from the property line. What is holding up the porch?
Foundation.
That's not, so it's actually, there's a full foundation under the front porch. So the, the whole structure would have been raised, or lifted, rather, and the foundation poured directly underneath the entire footprint, is I'm guessing how this happened. So it was always in the same spot. It never moved, just as, as Ms. Norcross mentioned, the taking of that line. So it is very interesting, yes. So we're not looking to build anything new there, just keep what had already been put there in the first place from where it was probably back in nineteen-ten.
And, Mr. Chairman, to your point, if it was just the porch, we'd certainly just cut it back, and then you would change the location. It's just that we're dealing with the foundation that's poured underneath is the problem.
Okay.
How far back does the town own from the road?
They own up to, you know, point four-one feet, just...
How many?
Point four-one feet.
That's how far, that's how far the foundation goes over.
Goes over into town property.
Yep.
At its most extensive.
So about six inches of the foundation.
You're just talking about the porch.
Six inches of the...
Oh, yeah.
I, I, that was one of my comments. I mean, you can, I don't see why you just don't put the porch in your lot line.
Again, that's the foundation. We have to dig out the foundation.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to rip into the sound foundation and...
Oh, okay.
And, you know, risk damaging the existing walls. Also, we're, would be within the conservation and town lot, town limits, so leaving it alone felt the best option.
I, I would suggest, I mean, are you done, or do you want?
Well, I'm, I'm probably not done, but please give me a call.
I would suggest that if we, the board sees fit to grant them a special permit, that we make it at risk. That we don't approve any extension of their dwelling or porch or whatever into town property. They, it's there, it's at risk, though. So if the town decides they want to take it back, we haven't approved them going out into town property. They don't want to dig it up, so they're, they're just at risk. If the town ever bothers them, hallelujah. And if it does, well, then they're going to have to pay to make it right.
And they understand the risk as far as snow removal goes? I think that was from the DPW, one of their concerns being that...
Right, but I think Brian is saying, and I'm saying, we don't want to put the board's imprimatur on the fact that you folks are over your lot line into the public way.
So you would want to condition that if the town ever came forward saying, hey, guys, you got to move your house back, that this decision that you would have issued didn't give us the authority to leave it there, essentially?
Correct.
Is that, I'd have to review that with my folks, because that clearly has a certain connotation.
Again, and, and, I've never had a case, and whether it was this board or years ago at another, on another board in another town, where we were overseeing approval to build on town property.
We have had this come up in the past. I don't remember if anybody was on, well, Al will be the only one.
Yeah, I think it was...
And we did something like this. We said it was at risk. We were not approving anything, you know, that was not owned by them. I think that might have been a neighbor, not the town. They were over the lot line. And I made the same point then. I did not want the board to, or I didn't want the applicant at some point in the future, if things got ugly, to claim the board approved it. Because we can't approve it.
I, I don't know how we can.
I don't. I mean, we can grant the special permit, but then we have to, I think, cut out from the special permit anything that goes into town property, and they're going to have to proceed at risk on that, period. Because there, there, the foundation is already there, that's the problem. If the foundation weren't there, they could just slice the porch back.
Yeah, it'd be an easy fix otherwise, but, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I've never seen this either in terms of encroaching. And I think it's just, it's a unique neighborhood down there in terms of how everything's close together.
Well, yeah, it may not be the only problem on the neighborhood regarding...
I'm guessing it's not. And part of the issue, too, we see now, a lot of times, with buildings, is the survey equipment just wasn't as accurate back then, when a lot of the stuff was done. So it's, you know, certain things get picked up now that weren't necessarily discovered, so.
Well, it's an excellent point.
I mean, it's there. We can't, we're not, I think we can, not excusing the fact that it's, it exists, and you can't generally get prescriptive rights over town property, so that's not really an argument for us either. You know, I guess it would be helpful for us, if, this issue aside, if the board could just give us some feedback on the rest of the design, and then if we could continue and speak to our clients about how they want to address that particular piece. I think that would be helpful for us in terms of making the most out of the meeting, if that makes sense.
I consider that, but may want to first, well, Tim, you have any questions?
I, I think the rest of the design is good. I think they meet the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale and Deirdre cases. They're intensifying existing nonconformities. Again, though, I, I would not approve anything that goes beyond property they have title to, whether it's the fence on the Pine Street Avenue side or this porch. That's their, going to be their problem at their expense if something adverse happens down the line with the town. That's their, going to be their problem at their expense if something adverse happens down the line with the town. And you know how narrow it is down there, who knows what's going to happen? I mean, even now.
It's narrow in Goodwater.
That's what I'm saying, even this time of year, I mean, it's really tight down there. That's all I have.
No, I think that makes sense. So I would be good with that if we were to vote for something like that. I'm not saying what to do, but I'm just a little confused on, you know, if you were to continue. You know, what would you, what would you, you'd come back with, just because it's already existing? You mentioned the foundation, so if we add the clause about the at-risk. You know, like I said, I'm good with that.
I would just want to have a chance to explain to my clients exactly what that would mean to them before saying, go ahead and grant it or vote on it.
Okay, why don't you continue it?
That's what I would suggest, I would continue it. And then perhaps they may see if there's some sort of alternative that we could pursue, but, or they might be comfortable with that. But I just don't want to go ahead and have that issue without speaking to them first.
Yeah, and if you have a reasonable proposal, we'd certainly listen to it.
Sure.
I don't know. I was going to, if we approved and make a condition, and, you know, they get that fence out of the town right away. But you said you're going to take it, I mean, you don't have any choice, really.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
This is a little more troublesome. I'm surprised they didn't pick it up, but I just don't want it to come back to haunt the board. That we somehow authorize people to build into the town right away, actually town street, really.
Again, I don't, we don't have the authority to allow.
No, but I don't want them to say, we did it at some point. And maybe you folks won't even be here then, it'll be who knows who.
Out of curiosity.
Because it'll be down the road.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
I don't expect I'll be here.
I would be happy to make a motion to continue. Do you think next month would be okay?
I do.
But before you make the motion, I just have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, I, I failed to mention that in this case, should there be some point of vote, that voting on this tonight is Al Donahue. Whoops, excuse me? I'll get my full list here, I apologize. Be Al Donahue, myself, Dave Nunnally, David Ryer, and Timothy Bailey, okay? So. How does insurance work? You're insured. You have insurance. It's sitting on town property. And it gets nailed by a plow truck. What, what does your insurance company say?
Good question, haven't asked.
They probably don't know about it.
They probably don't. I, my, my client, I didn't represent them when they purchased the property, so I don't know exactly what entered the title search and what was shown. I don't believe they were aware of the encroachment until the site plan was done. Generally, when you're purchasing a property, if you're getting a mortgage, they require you to get a mortgage inspection plan. But those plans are not instrument surveys and they're not terribly accurate. So it's probably nothing that's been flagged to anyone, really, at this point, to be totally honest with you.
Okay, what I would. David, I would want us as a board to write up that condition. That we, that you spoke of. And I would, I would propose a, you know, hear from motion as well, that we send that to town council for their review. Make sure that we've written it properly to cover. Cover the aspects of whatever we go forward on. Would that be necessary or?
We're not moving forward on that right now, right? We're just continuing.
Just continuing. We're going to continue it, but in the interim, before we continue the next meeting. I believe if we, if we feel tonight, there may be a condition we're going to require, that we're asking the attorney now to go back to his client on. I think we ought to, you know, to cover. That we've done it properly, show that condition to the town attorney.
I don't have any problem with that, makes sense.
Okay, so it's that way, so that's when we, and then when we have an opinion on that from the town attorney, and hopefully sooner or later. I would get that to your office.
Sure, that'd be great.
So that way, you know, and I can't guarantee how long it's going to take.
Yeah.
Now, the only, recognizing the town attorney might just say, we can't grant a special permit like that.
It's already been, it's already been acknowledged with this letter from our highway department. They currently know it's in town property.
Well, it's. Well, interestingly enough, it's listed, it's shown on the, on the septic plan too, that was done in the 90s. That was filed with the town showing the encroachment. So it's been, I guess, a known factor for the town for some period of time. Just, I don't believe it's ever come before, zoning before.
Been alright since 1910, but.
You know, even from this plan, I didn't pick it up, well, we just got this tonight.
Yeah, distance, yeah.
But if you look at it, if you look at the left side. You can see the, the red line goes outside the property line. That's on the existing, but when you look at the right. It, there's no red line there to go outside of, you really can't see it unless you look at the detail. So it's really easy, and that's why I had, I was going to ask, because I wasn't sure the drawing was correct. That why would they? Still, you know, go outside the lot line? The answer is because of the foundation. Now, I understand that, but it's not readily apparent, Al, so it seems to me it would be easily overlooked. That they're outside on the new construction.
Before entertaining a motion of continuance, there are people in the audience, and I think it's the, who else, if anyone wants to speak to this? Tonight?
Yeah, I think.
No, you got to have to come to the microphone, sir, please, and just identify yourself.
Jan Griffin, and we're, we're a butt, we're a budding neighbor. So there's a lot of concerns that you're going over there, but we, I, I wanted to speak to the same thing as far as, I understand that they brought it in there trying to go in the right direction. We're not trying to be a prohibitive neighbor, but the, in, in the same, we kind of have the same thing with the mass, because it is a small lot, but there. But the design, the design of it, like, they kind of say that they're not, you know, using the same footprint and keeping the same, you know, not really increasing the square footage. But to give you a look at the drawings, you know, the original house had a deck that was on the backside. There was only a little seven-foot jut that came back in the corner. So they're going to square it off, keep, you know, the footprint would grow. The, the square footage grows, the second floor. Is, you know, it's growing in size and mass and height. And, and then, so it, you know, we, that's where we have concerns. And also the same thing where the, the, the building, the, the proposing to build a four, a building that's 40 feet long on a 40-foot property. The, the, the building itself is 39 feet long, the property's only 40 feet. So the same concerns that the town has on the front, we have on the back, because that we bought in the rear. And I don't, I don't see how they, you know, how do they build it? How do they maintain it? How do they paint it? How do you have, you know, they're, they're going, they're, they're so far maximizing. We're not against, you know, it started, they sent a picture and it was going to be a gambrel. Then the, the, we've been following it, just not to be against the project, but just to keep an eye on it. Because a lot of the houses in the areas have been, been done over and they keep, they're, they're just becoming, they're going up in mass and size and height. They're, they're, it's detrimental to us, it's, you know, it's blocking views. It's, it's, it's making our, you know, every, the properties are getting tighter. But as far as even just constructability, the, the, can, can you, I haven't seen a detail on the, the soffit. At the historical, you said this, do you have a detail on what the actual soffit on the house is?
It's a six-inch soffit.
Six inches, so you, that's, and then the house is 39. So you have 40, the property's 40 feet long, and, and from 39 feet dwelling and six-inch soffit, the, the house is 40 feet long. So it does, it does not have, it doesn't have. One-eighth of an inch to, to the property line. And where, and in the back where they're squaring it off, and I, and I, I commend it, they don't have to dig, they're going to do the footing so they, you know, to try, you know. Because they wouldn't be able to, it'd be very difficult to put a footing in that. But the, you, you still, you know, there's the. It just seems like it's so tight to the, to the thing. I mean, from, I, I think there's things that they could do to, you know, you could step that gambrel back on the second floor. They've actually made it two feet longer on the second floor, because they extended it over that, the front porch. So I, I just would like to say, and, you know, as they go and, and research and find out these other things, that they, they try to, you know. To, to work on the scale a little bit. But not even the footprint, when, after they came back, the, the, the house originally didn't have the, the two. I call it wings, but they, they have overhangs now for two doors that were added, right and left. And one door's on the tight side of Pine Street that the town's concerned about. The other door is over the driveway. You know, they said it's going to cover a landing. I, I don't know what the new septic and what type of a landing is going over the driveway, where the septic's going to go. And then have the, that, those pagoda-type wings, you know, blocking more square footage from, from the rear view that, you know, we look at in Antucket Sound. So those are, I, I don't want to be. Confrontational to stop the project. I, I, I don't want to be that type of neighbor, but I do think that, you know, it's, I asked about the heights. Those little cottages, they were like seven-foot ceilings, now that they have a 10-foot ceiling on the first floor. According to my math, on the, when I did it with the height of the dormers, they're well over nine feet on the second floor. They have a vaulted ceiling that's going up 12 feet. So even though the height is within the height, it's, it's, does get, it's a lot more density, a lot more mass. And, 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 you know, those are, are some of the concerns. I, I, I'm not even sure how, how they, they shingle it and frame it. You know, they'd have to work on our property. Could, could the, could, could there be some comments to that, just because maybe, I don't want to, maybe there's a happy medium. And, and I'd rather not, you know, I don't want to, I'd rather not come back. I'd like to, if they can be some things that, that they mention and they can incorporate it. Because in fairness to them too, because they're going to have to keep coming back, so that, those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Griffin raised some good points, and what I want to mention myself is a couple of things. Your current, the current house is 785 square feet of habitable space. The proposed, not including a finished basement, is 1320. And with the finished basement goes to 1860. And. I have to double check, are you increasing the number of bedrooms?
No.
Okay. So. Given the use you're going to have for the, the new construction. Are you going to, are all the inhabitants who have cars going to be able to park on the property itself, as opposed on the street?
When it's built?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now. Regarding Mr. Griffin's point on how do you do the construction, particularly in the rear of the property, without going on neighbor's property?
I guess I would just point to the precedent where, when they raised the house and poured that new foundation underneath, they figured it out. I know it will be difficult, I definitely accept that, but there will be a way.
Okay, good. So, one second, Mr., you can hear in a second, Mr. Griffin. I mean, you're, you're barely.
The last thing, one, one inch from the fence. There's point 7.77 currently on the north side. And they're going to be 1.08 on the new construction from the fence.
Can you put a ladder on that?
No.
Yeah, I guess it would be similar, like when we're working in Provincetown and other very tight neighborhoods, where you're right up against in a butter. It's difficult, you know, we would ask for some, some flexibility. I guess as, as a butters.
Well, you've got no right to go on their property.
We understand that, yeah.
Understood.
If the concern is, I guess, the construction protocol as to how we're going to build this without encroaching on somebody's property, we could certainly provide that for the next meeting.
I would like to know that.
Yep. That's fine.
If you're doing a continuance, I'd like to know how you, how you build the back of this house without encroaching upon, on the neighbor's property. Or you take the opportunity to work with the, with your butter regarding the design of the house. So that you can come to an agreement regarding encroaching on their property during construction.
Okay. Yeah, we can figure out the mechanics of the construction piece.
Right, and whether you come up with an agreement with the butter. But I, I think that's, I, you know, would like to be educated in how you're going to be able to pull this off without encroaching on their property.
Sure.
Okay. We still have a meeting, yes, please.
Jan Griffin, um, yes, I live at 10 Pine in the backyard. My concern as a nurse is.
Could you speak just a little louder?
I live right behind, as a nurse with liability, my concern is that we have, we have trees and a tree on the other side of the fence and a fence. How is this going to happen with construction workers? If someone falls, you, you, you can't get my tree to make your house. If someone falls into the tree, there's a lot of liability on our part, and I'm not going to accept it.
I understand.
Well, I think we would, I mean, again, it's no different than the other construction project, because there's issues with the neighboring property, we're obviously responsible for it, so.
Sure, responsibility and getting resolved, it can be two different things. And I'm just trying to think ahead of time how this would, would work out.
Right.
And.
I guess I would just like to touch on the view issues that were raised. I, I was mentioned by Mr. Griffin in terms of the view aspect. And so the Griffins' view is essentially, the main view corridor is right over the parking area, which essentially is going to be largely unchanged. There is the portico that's going to go in there over the, the overhang on the first floor. So my clients are trying to be respectful in terms of maintaining that view by largely keeping this project within the footprint. Because again, the main view corridor is over that parking area. Now, we're going higher, yes, but there's no, to my knowledge, there's no view easement over our property benefiting the Griffins' property. So there's no, there's nothing that says that the, the view has to remain the same in perpetuity for all time going forward. But that being said, my clients have been worked to try and allow the main view for that rear property to remain untouched as best they can. So I think there should be some consideration for that.
I see, no, no, I appreciate that. It.
Sounds like your client really would be well advised to talk to these folks, because they're going to be 1.08 inches away from them. So unless, you know, they, they want to go in with people that are opposed to the project. They might want to discuss it and see if they can ameliorate some of the concerns.
But, yeah, what I don't.
No, I appreciate the construction piece, and I thought we had initially, when there was concerns about the height raised by the Griffins at the first historical meeting. And we, along with the historic commission, we reduced the height by 10 and a half inches. But clearly, we need to have another discussion, it seems to.
Now, just keep in mind, if your, if your workmen are encroaching upon their property. Then there's a possibility that the zoning officer would get involved, and, and that would.
Yep.
You know, the building inspector, and that would be a problem for you to be able to continue the project.
Nope, totally understand that.
In fact, that would make it a condition if this board were going to approve a, a special permit. That all activity be within their property and not, you know, on the public way or into the neighbor's property. And that way, we can shut the job down if we have to.
And it would get shut down.
Exactly.
Sorry, I'm sorry, what was the first part about the public?
In the, if you, you know, got out in the public way.
Oh, okay.
Or onto the neighbor's property.
I assume there'd probably be temporary parking of vehicles on the public section in terms of.
I don't think so down there, we're going to probably, well, I don't know, we're going to have to talk about that.
Not there.
I mean, this is, it's, it's not only down in the campground, but it's right on a corner to make it even more congested.
You're, obviously, you're going to be restricted on your timeframe when you do any construction.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. It. It wouldn't be the first project in that section that construction vehicles were on the, on a public way during construction. You know, when it's off, when it's not during those months of May through Labor Day. I mean, it's, it does happen.
Yeah, it's down there today and there's vehicles on the road.
I mean, whether it's landscapers or, they're, I mean, it's, so it's, but.
Not the summer either.
No, I understand, but we wouldn't be doing work in the summer, that's also be part of the.
Well, you, you, once the walls are up. You can be working inside, and at that point, the construction vehicles should be remaining on, on the property.
Right, because we have a sufficient driveway area to accommodate those.
Yep.
All right.
But. But before I close public meetings and so forth, I just.
No, we can't close, we're going to continue, can't close a public meeting.
Well, that's true, I guess it's going to be a continuance.
We just have to give them a continuing, so that's what we want to do. Tim, did you have something?
I mean, I was just going to say one thing about the constructability, which I think is a great point brought up by Mr. Griffin. And maybe this is a question for the board, you know, after, not particular for this case, but if there's some sort. But if there's some sort of standard when it comes to the space needed, you know, between the project and the lot line with construction, I mean, we have seen a lot of projects in like the campground area, if there's some like standardization of, you know, if it's because one foot, I mean, in this case, I forget what the other case, maybe a couple of months ago, or
You're right, one foot isn't enough for a ranch, no, let alone a building that's gonna be this height.
And, yeah, I mean, what, because I'm sure come the next meeting, you guys will have an answer to that question.
Right.
You know, that's that's obvious, but from the board's perspective, if I was the Griffins with a tree and a and a fence, I'd be pretty nervous and and maybe a little annoyed, you know. Are they really gonna be able to do what they say they do, are gonna do in the next meeting, you know, with one foot?
It's Yeah, I don't know. They say they can, and if they don't, well, if we put the condition in, we could stop construction, the neighbors, if they trespass, they can certainly make a complaint. You know, if they go onto their property without permission, it can be a trespass.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Please do.
For the property owner who's having all this work done, you do not wanna open Pandora's box because the property is already on town land. These folks have a pretty good, given the dimensions of this property and that property line, could wind up, because that's all gonna come up with regard to the front of this property and also their property. So it might behoove the folk that own this property to, and the attorney here, to really talk to these folks over here and see what, if anything, can be agreed to relative to that one inch inside, just inside property line for this house. That's, that's
Well, one foot, technically.
Okay.
How many is four?
Where are we?
The back property line. The old one is
What's the dimension of the house?
0.77.
Well, it's a little, yeah, it's just a little bit smaller, front to back.
The only reason you have more room in the back is because you're not on your property in the front.
Let's, let's go hopefully correct.
Yeah, I mean
The year, the current plan shows that the year, the the rear setback has been 1.08 feet.
I can only go off what the surveyor puts on the plan, so that's
Right, yeah, and I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's pretty close. And and the, unless it's a pre-pre-prefab house that's gonna be dropped on the foundation, I don't know how you construct.
That's where Jack earns his money on this.
Okay. And if, maybe Jack can bring you examples of other projects that have been done with only a foot from a from a side, you know, from a rear setback or
Yeah, no, I I understand, we do, I understand your concern, I understand the Griffin's concern on that piece, and it's it's well-stated. So we'll, we don't take it lightly, we we will take a hard look at this.
That has to be, of course, has to come from the attorney.
I think everybody's ready to go home, so I would ask if we could continue to your March meeting?
I'll move that we continue case number 2023-032. Our meeting in March, do you have the date, Brian? I don't, I don't have the calendar.
Yeah. Phone here? Okay, more code, try it again.
March 29th.
Okay, to March 29, 2023.
So, can I second that?
I have a second, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of
Aye.
To the meeting? Thank you. The, now regarding our, what we're gonna request the the attorney to look at that language. Now, we can write that that document up outside the meeting and just pass them on ourselves to get it done correctly.
Okay.
All agreement on that? Okay, and then attorney, it
Because it's for our advice, it's not really discussing the merits of the case.
Good, good, thank you. Attorney, can I have your your email address and contact information?
Sure, I can, she doesn't have a card with her, let me write that down for you.
Thank you very much for your
No, no, of course, I think
It's a wicked tough spot to figure out.
We can get more interesting on the case.
Hey, if it was easy, everybody would do it, right?
By the way, your dog was very well behaved.
Thank you, sir.
Well-trained, we know that.
Oh, I didn't even see the dog. I won't, I won't tell you she was snoring during the first one.
She was.
You never write the snores.
I was looking around, I said, who is that?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dennis, I
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, I remember you had J M N O R C R O S S at Riley, I'm sorry.
A and D, Norcross.com.
No, no, I was just trying to read the, I was trying to read the email address. Who don't have the right, okay, with the call. Okay.
Well, it turned out to be a longer evening than I anticipated.
Two cases
I'd be miserable, I thought this was gonna last this long.
I'm I'm not surprised. Well, let me get myself organized here, gentlemen.
Do you still need it? I have the website with this email.
Oh. Okay, all right. Yeah, now you read this better. Okay, thank you, David. Of course. Okay, I'm just gonna take a 90-second break to go to the restroom.
Well, I'm gonna do the same then.
How are things going, Tim?
Good, yeah.
Works well?
Yeah, yeah, so far.
Chris Murphy is over in New Zealand right now.
Chris Murphy?
He's wife.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
And I have a friend who's keeping him, he might need, might need him to be my, what am I called, partners. So he, northern New Zealand is beginning slammed with weather, rain, flooding, everything else.
Oh, man.
So it turns out Chris is in southern
Okay.
New Zealand.
Oh, yeah, didn't they just get a bad, they got like a, like a monsoon or what, or what, like a really bad, oh, man.
So a friend of ours contacted them to find out, you know, if they were being affected by this. And he said, no, they weren't, you know, where they were was out of those elements.
Well, I'm curious, Joe on our board, he's, he just sold his house in Harwood, Harwood.
Oh, yeah?
He just sold his home. So I'm curious to see if he
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know if he's repurchasing, but
Oh, okay, yeah.
He's, I'm Facebook friends with him, and we, we just sold our, sold our house.
Certainly wouldn't personally wanna be in the market right now.
How long ago did you move up here?
About 23 years ago. Bought the home in 99. Been living here now for about 12 months.
What was it, what was the day we saw, we had like, was it 13 cases by 10:00 PM? Today was 2:00.
Just depends on the cases.
Okay, gentlemen.
Minutes.
Let's approve the minutes from last meeting, January 25th. I think the minutes that were left on the table were revised with the comments that that Dave had had sent sent forward. Have you, I wasn't at the meeting, but folks, do everything look okay?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure, because I think I saw my name on it, and I was not at the meeting either, so I just wanna make sure. Is this the right, is this the right most up-to-date minutes, board members present?
Yep, but they do show you it's present. Yep.
I was not here, so that
Okay, okay.
So
But we could approve them, subject to that change.
All right, your motion to, on the minutes?
Oh, I'm sure Chris Murphy was here too.
Oh, is he not here also? Who is here?
Chris was here, yep.
Al, Al, Chris, Dave, Joe, and Tim.
Yeah.
So
Ken and John were here too.
All right, it's John and Ken.
Yeah, they were both here.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes with that revision.
Revision of, okay, all right, we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes approved? Okay. Uh We got a new business, and it just, guys, minor detail. And I was, was sent a letter today from a Harwood resident. Whoops, I gotta get this fixed. But basically, it was a copy of a letter that was sent to the Cape Cod Times. And that had to, that involved a neighbor, a resident in town that's complaining about the fact that on a, on a case that came before this board a couple of years ago, that the client is still, has a dumpster, which they feel is partly untown property. And they also have an RV, which is parked on the property that people are are staying in. Okay? So they feel the fact that, from the comments of the letter, they sent to the, they sent it to the Cape Cod Times editor, which it maybe ended up on the, on the Cape Cod Times. They kind of, and I'll send it to to you tomorrow, kind of refer to the fact that we're all old-time politics taking place in Harwood, allowing this person to still use this dumpster, and as well, town not coming forward and and finding out why this RV is being used for, you know, for for a living. Okay? So when I got that today, I
And they're saying it grew out of a case that came to the board?
Yeah. The dumpster was here originally, and I'll I'll send you all the information.
Yeah, I mean, we never approve people, because that's prohibited.
No, no, the the RV had nothing to do with the case. It was a dumpster being on the property, okay? But basically, I guess the inference is the fact that this might be a contractor who's having some seasonal people sleeping in the, in his RV while they're working for him during the day. Well, okay, anyways. I've, I turned the matter over to to Jack Nae, and I
Yeah, the building inspector, that's his
Building inspector, has his own office and so forth, so it I was copied on the letter to the, actually, my, you know, my, as as chairman, I was sent into the Cape Cod Times, so forth. Slutman also got copies of it. Anyways, I proceeded today to get in front of Jack's eyes to take a look at. All right, so, anyways, it, obviously, it's a case, at least this board was not aware of this particular resident in town still utilizing an RV or or still having a dumpster after the construction is over. And it's residing, they think, on partly untown property. Okay, so that's
We had a case come before us where somebody wanted to live in it, and we would not give them relief, because it's prohibited in the code.
Yeah, I mean, the, the code does, I believe, if there's
The Bible, it should say
If there's been a fire, whatever might be happening, you are given state code and so forth, a period of time to be able to have a trailer on your yacht. But this is not that kind of situation. All right, so I'll send you, I'll send everybody a copy of this, so the, you know, for your records and have it. Any, any other new business anyone wants to bring up?
I just wanted to mention one quick thing, I know it's, you know, 9:30, but I will not be at the next meeting. I can send an email to to you and Alicia. And I did just wanna kind of say, not talking about a specific case, but just a general thing. So maybe we could check in with the building commissioner about, like, you know, if he has any insight on what we should be looking at when it comes to like constructibility of of how, you know, the area, if there's an area or minimum, you know, distance, you know, like, you know, a ladder or such, because I'm just thinking, you know, a petitioner could say, we're gonna get it done, and the abutter's gonna say, no, you can't. And, you know, who, do, so we take this, the word of the petitioner, you know, on that, okay, you'll get it done, okay, sounds good. That's, I was just getting hung up on that, so I'm just curious if there's a standard that we should be kind of following going forward.
Okay.
He brought up, he's right, you know, you go up to beat now, you know, they're, they're right next to each other, so that you know, they have figured out how to build in very close proximity.
Yeah.
And and like was brought up, communication, you know, usually is
Well, exactly, it won't be a problem if you, oh, yeah, no problem, come over, yeah, you know, whatever, there's no problem. But when there's a problem between two neighbors
Well, if we approve the special permit, you know, we're required to grant the special permit if it's not gonna be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, not the neighbor. But they can only act within their own property lines. If they go foot over, they've trespassed.
You go an inch over.
They go over an inch over, right, they've trespassed, and then it's up to your abutter to get on the horn to the police department and the building inspector. In which case, if we made that a condition with this one, when they're that close, we shut the project down. Building inspector has authority to shut them down.
I think the fire department should comment on it as well, because that
Fire?
The setback is supposed to be 20 feet, as we all know. And the reason the setback's set up is because of fire.
Well, you know, we've proved other ones down there
Yes, we have, but I don't know if they've been that close to
I don't even know if fire gets to comment on these, I don't know.
It goes out to everybody.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they commented on it.
They never comment on that kind of thing.
But I think it should be just, I think it should be taken to the fire department just for an opinion.
Well, yeah, well, you know, we've got a third of the town Well, yeah, well, yeah, you know, we've got a third of the town, it's non-conforming lots that don't come close to twenty feet to setbacks, so I don't know what, you know. And I don't know if the setbacks were set up because of fire in the first place.
No, he's here over the, the crack, well, no, not at all.
No, I'm sure they had.
Came up, what did they, seventy-two? Sixty-eight, sixty-eight.
I don't remember.
I, I, I had the list.
But got it down someplace, but.
If you look at cities and so forth, and apartment buildings are inch, inches apart.
I think that was a good thing you said about bringing examples, I'm just, I, maybe, and I should do some research off, but like, I just have no idea how you would even do it, and I think when someone comes and says, nope, we can do it, of course, that's what they're gonna say, and the butter is, of course, gonna say, no, you can't, so I'm just, that's the, that was the point of my comment.
They would need a crane going over the house, bringing a.
Yeah.
Well, if they have a prefab wall, they can, you know, stick it up and attach it to the side.
That's what I mentioned, I said, unless it's a.
Yeah, and they might be need a crane.
Prefabricated housing.
Yeah.
You know?
And a lot of them are nowadays.
Coming on, you're gonna drop in a free half housing.
You're gonna put that crane, David.
All right.
Okay, so.
What do you wanna do on, uh, three-twenty-five fourteen T?
All right, so anyways, no more, no business, any additional old business that needs to be brought up? Okay, all right, so, planning board, I mean, excuse me, the planning, you know, um, first of all, Dave, I, I thought your, your write-up was excellent. And, um, by the way, it, uh, in reading going under the Gale and Deidrich cases, um, and in consideration of the fact that, you know, it's, I think it, with the new board members and so forth, I would like to, and this is just a side note, at this time, has scheduled one of our upcoming meetings, when everyone's gonna be here, we'll back over Gale and Deidrich cases, uh, and just to discuss the, you know, what, what provisions are and how to apply it and so forth.
And there is a typo there, I just noticed, it's, uh, it's not H, not Deidrich, it's Deidrick, that should be a K, I didn't pick it up before, sorry.
Okay, well, well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take points away for, for that. But I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Tough one, you don't have a secretary anymore, you have to do your own typing.
Cause there are parts of the Deidrich case, like, actually, I, I get confused about, so I wanna particularly wanna go over that case, but, all right, so we have Dave's comments here. Did he most have, have any other comments they wanna make regarding what we feel we need to recommend to the planning board?
And show Ken's comments, Ken Dixon, he did not like my comments, he did not want to eliminate, uh, subsection K.
Right.
It just, it just seems to me that towns give lip service to wanting more affordable housing, and it never happens, whether it's Chatham, whether it's Harwich, we saw the big controversy with the housing committee, five years without a single unit. But everybody loves affordable housing, but nobody wants it anywhere near them.
Yep.
So.
We wouldn't miss it again.
If they really intend to increase A D U's, they ought to get rid of the setback requirement, if they need to do an addition, and let us decide it under Gale and Deidrick. Because if it's a non-conforming house and they wanna go into the setback, we can grant a special permit. We can't grant that for an A D U with subsection K in there, we'd have to give them variance, and they're not gonna meet the variance requirement ninety-nine times out of a hundred.
The, the only one that actually has potential to meet the variance requirement was a past case, which we still gotta hear, cause he had a soil issue.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that would actually.
Yes, yes.
Would possibly qualify for a variance, but, but regardless, you know, um, that, that had a soil issue, but that, that, that can come up. The, my comment on this is that I agree with what David said here, and, um, I sent him an email earlier this week regarding parking. Now, the, this new bylaw requires, the bylaw requires one parking space per A D U.
At least.
At least one. And the, um, I think any objections is gonna come from any of the neighbors on any project, the main thing is, where are they gonna park all the cars? And I don't know whether or not this adequately discusses that, cause it's not just the A D U parking, but how many bedrooms are already in the existing, the existing house, and how many people with cars registered that live there, and are they all gonna be able to keep them on the property?
That question came up with another property.
Yes.
Downtown was not been settled. There had been a change actually in the zoning. There was, the big issue was, they needed, and I think when we were discussing it, they were gonna have to have a minimal of two parking spaces. Because the properties consisted of one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom. And many of the neighbors had a concern about where those cars were gonna be parked, and we were discussing, they would have to have a minimum, because each apartment was going to have to have the ability to park two cars because of guests.
Yeah, I vaguely remember that, yeah.
That's the one off of Bank Street? The, the, the former nur- not nursing home or whatever.
Oh, well, that, yeah, that's.
That's one, I think that's the one you're referring to.
Oh, yeah, that was a big deal, that one, because they were gonna do, gosh, what were they gonna do, twenty-six units, twenty-eight units?
If you go into the housing, like, there's, there's a couple of, uh, senior housing, or at least one large senior housing unit down on Bank Street, each of those homes has an additional parking space for guests. It is designated right on their sidewalk, not the sidewalk, but on, on the road where you park. So having an additional parking is, is completely necessary. So if we're talking about, you know, property that's gonna consist of ten apartments, there's gonna have to be guest parking. Beyond the homeowner.
Well, the, I think the, the one thing is, every neighborhood have guests that come over and they park on the street. The issue is, is how con- consistently on-street parking is being used by that dwelling. And, and, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, I think, I think perhaps raising up the change in the, the bylaw recommendations to make it, every A D U has to have two guys of parking would, 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 um, help with consideration of, that makes sure that, including the, the existing home, that there's enough parking for everybody in the.
Well, they can only have two bedrooms in the A D U.
Right.
So you could just say at least two off-street parking spaces, two bedrooms?
Yeah, one for each bedroom.
One for each bedroom.
Yeah, if it's only one bedroom, you're only, only all one?
Yeah.
No, cause they're, well, yeah, that's why I favor just leaving it like it is, and it's, uh, the, well, I guess not, because they don't need to come to, as if they meet the criteria, right?
Right, no.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, frankly.
See what you're saying, but I, you know, requiring two bedrooms for a one, or two parking spots for a one-bedroom, you know.
Many people are married.
Yeah.
And it would give, but then they'd have a guest parking spot.
Yeah.
I don't object to it, I, I don't, like I said, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
I think that should be a decision made by the buildings department, not us.
Well, they're asking for recommendations, that's, I mean, this is, I mean, so what, I mean, and if, if we're gonna have requests, they draw up subsection K, which means, you know, setbacks, um, is, is that a upping the, the parking requirement for the A D U, does, does that help to get that subsection K, you know, off the, off the board?
Well, we don't even know if the planning board will accept it, our comment.
Oh, of, of course.
So might not even, if you believe what the town planner kinda indicated to Ken Dixon, they wanna retain restrictions.
I mean.
So.
Anything that's gonna be ten, I don't think there are many houses in this town of ten thousand square feet for a lot that meet all the current new setback requirements. I, I haven't, I mean, we don't see them, because people come here with non-conforming lots.
Right.
No, they can't, they can't meet them.
They can't meet them, so it's.
And there's a heck of a lot of them, cause that's what we get every night, the non-conformities, and most of them are setback, not all of them, but most of them.
At least one setback.
Well, yeah, because if, even if it's a size, when they wanna expand or do something, they're gonna violate the setback, well, intensified.
Right, and again, sometimes I get confused by this, if a house has, is conforming on three sides, but on one side, it's non-conforming on a setback, can they only adjust that setback area, or can they, are they allowed to adjust the others?
This board has always, always taken the position that the increase of the non-conformity is allowed, but if they create a new non-conformity, including a new setback violation, that requires a variance.
All right, so.
Now Attorney Crowell says some towns have taken a different view, but this board has always taken the more conservative approach, based upon Deidrick.
If you figure sheds on, on a setback that's, side setback of twenty feet, if you put a shed in, you can be five feet away from the property line. If you put a, for instance, if you have a generator.
If it's under, if it's under a hundred square feet.
Right, if you have a generator, you can, you can put a generator in, that's under a hundred square feet as well.
Right.
Including a pad. But that was just one of the questions that had been asked some time ago.
Okay, so, so the, the, as, from our point of view on the Gale case, if they can only intensify the non-conform setback.
Under the Deidrick case, yes.
Under Deidrick?
Gale, Deidrick, that, Deidrick was the one that established that principle.
You know, and I, I tell you, I read the Deidrick case a couple of times, and I s- I get confused by what happened there in Chatham.
They basically said you cannot create a new non-conformity, but they didn't define what a new non-conformity is. And Attorney Crowell tells us some towns said that if you've got a setback violation on the east side, and now you wanna create one on the south, they don't consider that a new one, cause you've already got a setback violation. The violation to be a new one would have to be, say, height, or lot area, or whatever. This board has always said, no, I mean, if you've got your violation on the east, and now you wanna do one on the south, that's a new violation, come on.
Right, yeah, no, I, okay, this one I just told you.
So anyway, that's, yeah, that's the Deidrick, they said, no new violation. No new non-conformity.
No new non-conformity, okay, all right. So, um, what's, what's the purview of the members of the board? Uh, Tim, do you have an opinion on, on, you wanna send in, in the, our comments to the planning board, um, strictly as, as Dave wrote it? Do we wanna consider they suggesting that we increase the, 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 the parking for, on any of you?
I think, I defer Dave, I mean, as he wrote him.
Okay.
Wouldn't that become like a police decision, like, if people, if you have one bedroom, one parking spot, and now there's two cars and they're on the street, wouldn't that be a police ticket? That, that, that's in their jurisdiction, is, is it an our jurisdiction to, to kind of?
It's in our jurisdiction if, if the code's written to allow us to do that, I mean, we, we've, we've turned down people because they, they couldn't.
Parking.
Couldn't show where they were gonna be parking.
Right.
Enough parking in a lot.
Right.
So, we're saying like, okay, I mean, you got, you know, you got two cars already, you're gonna, you're gonna rent up, you wanna rent, make an A D U, and, you know, can, can a, a one-bedroom A D U be restricted to, only, only can have one, one car parking? The question is, 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 as long as the people can demonstrate that everyone who has a registered car that lives there is gonna be able to park on the lot.
Right.
That's how, somehow, I, I think it should be, be considered.
Then how, okay.
So then, then we turn the police department into a.
And, you know, we go also could say we've got no comment, we're happy with the planning board's reduction to the ten thousand square feet, and let it go and see what happens. I, I'm not sure how many people are gonna put an addition on for an A D U, so my point might not really be meaningful, I don't, I don't know.
I just don't think we should get ourselves involved in that, because this, this past case, that decision is gonna be made by the builder, even though he meant, you know, that property down there, I know you went through it, but they're gonna make the decision towards how many parking spaces that property is going to actually have. Because there's gonna be parking spaces necessary for people who are gonna come in and do work at the house. You have a plumber down there doing some work in that apartment, well, that truck's gonna have to go somewhere, so I'm assuming, and I won't assume anything, that when the property is built, it's gonna have to be built to accept other motor vehicles beyond the ones that the, uh, residents have.
Well. Um. I mean, temporary, I mean, we, my street, I mean, some days are like, I mean, I gotta be weaving around my road, cause of all the landscaping companies. I mean, it's just.
They're absolutely right.
I mean, so, but, so the temporary parking on, on street, um, I don't care if you got a forty thousand, or no- non-conforming lot or not, even on nor- even on conforming lots, people are parking in the streets, you know, plumbers, landscapers.
Yep.
So it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Conforming or not.
They're building a house down the street from us on Church Street, they shut one lane down illegally last week. They just put a truck out there, put the flashers on, and they were there by, for hours working.
Well, in all fairness to the police department, they've taken, seems to have taken a position, you have a yard sale, and you don't have on-street parking. We don't see it.
Yep, right.
Cause they allow, without anything being said to, not to get involved in that and allow you as a property owner, you wanna have a yard sale or something else down there, cause it happens year-round down here, and there's many streets down here that have, basically, they are not marked, no parking.
Right.
There's a reason for that.
No, correct, and, and I, I, we had a case where I went to the police department, I asked them about the, the parking situation. And, and the comment from the sergeant, whatever it was, was that, and this was a corner lot, and it was on Bank and Miles, I can't remember, but they said, no, and we, we have corner lots like that, now this, he said, that one, that's a street that should've had no parking signs on it, and he admitted that, cause I said, this is crazy, wh- wh- why doesn't this street have it, when over there it does? And he said it was an oversight, but the bottom line is, that they, they said, if we find people consistently parking too near a corner, then they're gonna get ticketed. If they're, they're warned, then ticketed.
And Al's right, you'd, you'd have to have a scavenger hunt to find a no parking sign, there are very few.
Legally, though, they can't park within twenty feet of this, of a corner, of the intersection anyways, that's regardless what is posted.
Right, yeah.
So, but I mean, the list of it.
All right, um.
You're gonna get fire at it if they're using it.
Anyway, what do you wanna do?
I'm in favor of going forward with, with Dave's to the board, planning board, the way it's written. I, I may make an appearance at the board and also discuss regarding, um, on, emphasize, or maybe we do it in writing upfront, but emphasizing the fact that, you know, changing the, the square footage to ten thousand feet is we think is possibly a non-starter, because unless you eliminate subsection K, cause no one's gonna, no one, under twenty thousand square feet's gonna come closer to, you know, to qualifying. And, and there are very few, even in the twenty thousand-foot range, that have the setbacks for, for a conforming forty thousand square foot lot. Step in the right direction?
I'm not sure I understand the ten, I mean, many of these lots here are ten thousand square feet, many of them in this community.
Right.
And let's just say for the sake of discussion, you've got a home that's, say, let's say, it's thirteen thou- thirteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet, and the homeowner decides that they would like to put a, um, a. and the homeowner decides that they would like to put a, an apartment in for their grandparents. As long as a property does not go be higher than thirty feet, I mean, we're talking about a ranch, and you take that roof off, and it's constructed in such a way that it allows now to have that apartment upstairs.
But that's, that doesn't come on the ADU, that, they can do that.
No, I understand that, but
But because they're not renting it out.
Accessory apartments, those, they're what, six, they gotta be rented for six months?
Minimum of six months.
Minimum of six months. So
I don't believe the ADU rule comes on, even if it really wants to add a bedroom
Right.
and so forth, even with a kitchenette, I don't believe, you know, as long as the septic system cuts it, you know, and if it's a nonconforming lot that we say that they can, you know, they can intensify that, that area, they're, they're all set to go.
Right. But if it's gonna be an accessory apartment
Which means they're gonna rent.
Well, not necessarily, but under our definition, they have to have a kitchen and a bathroom. Now, if they just put a bedroom in, that's a whole different story.
They can put a bedroom and a kitchen in it for the, the in-laws, and, and the bath can be in the hall.
Could.
And it doesn't, doesn't fall under
It could, but as long as it's not an addition that's going into the lot line, they can do it. If it's an addition that's gonna violate a lot line, they can't do it.
Unless it's nonconforming, it's already all the lot line
Well, they can't do it without a variance, they come to us and want variance.
A special permit, because at that point, they're gonna need an intensification of the lot line. If it, if the lot line is under twenty feet already, they can go ahead and, and come from the board.
Not according to this fourteen, what is it? Three fifteen, four, uh, three twenty-six fourteen T?
Am I misunderstanding this? I thought this referred to an accessory dwelling unit that's being done for the purposes of not only additional housing, but being rented out.
No, doesn't say that.
That's my understanding of it, too.
Doesn't say that, it says the purpose is to increase the number of small dwelling units for rent in town. That's the purpose.
Right, so they're
Doesn't say you have to rent it. That's just the purpose.
But you don't have to, but if you don't rent it, then it's, it's like, the case again is just being continued. The issue there is, he got a building permit to put in an in-law apartment for his mother-in-law that, and, and the person ended up doing it because she died, and now he wants to turn that into a rentable unit for income.
Okay, I, I wasn't on that case.
No, but, but, but he, he had, he had a building permit to, to build this bedroom and kitchenette over, over the garage.
Okay, but
And that, so that's what outcomes from the board.
Is that going into one of the setbacks, though? See, probably, that's a different case. Different case, if it didn't go into setback.
It was square footage on that case, right? He didn't have the, the lot.
The issue was, the issue was he wanted to go for an ADU.
Yeah.
And it turned, turned out it had been approved for his mother-in-law to live in, right? And, and had a bathroom and a kitchenette.
Right.
And that got approved
Yeah.
because it, you know, and he got the thing squared away with the Department of Health and so forth, the septic. All that got squared away. Then she died, he had a stroke, and now he's trying to create income.
Right, but his problem was lot size, right? It wasn't the setbacks?
It was both.
Actually, didn't that
It was setback.
Didn't they add to that, they bought a portion of the lot
Lot. But he was under, I forget, I forget if it was no, it was, it was, it was, it was probably a setback. Okay?
But was it an addition?
It is, it's an addition. Pre-existing addition that got approved under one thing, now he wants to tell you, he wanted to turn it into an ADU.
Right, but I mean, he built the addition for the apartment.
Right, and that got approved.
Okay, I don't know.
Anyways, I, I think I don't believe that we're gonna build an, an additional ADU apartment with, with subsection K still in there. I mean, particularly down in that under twenty thousand square foot range. And I think that needs to be a discussion point, because it, you know, let's, let's have a, let's have, I think they need to have a a new bylaw here that, that can actually increase to, you know, accessory dwelling units.
Well, if they're gonna, it seemed to me, the reason I did this, because you sent it around and asked for comments.
Right.
And if they're really intent on increasing ADUs, I think you need to get rid of K. Because it doesn't apply just to ten thousand, it applies to any size, if they're gonna violate a setback. You could have a forty thousand square foot lot that's legit, but maybe the house goes into one of the setbacks, or the addition would, in which case, they've gotta commit, well, they can't do it without a variance.
So now
Because K says you can't do it.
Right, and so now, if it's, if it's, and if it's under forty thousand square feet, the law itself is nonconforming already, and, and now that there are setbacks, let's say their setbacks are all fine right now, but now due to the addition, they're gonna, they're gonna create a new nonconformity. We're not gonna allow.
Well, no, that, and we'd have to give them a variance, right.
So how do you give the, and what's, what's a variance based upon?
I don't think they'll ever get one, that's what I said. Ninety-nine cases out of a hundred, how are they gonna show a hardship?
Yeah, we had one of those, going back exactly to describing
We've had several of them, we turned them down, because they couldn't show a hardship. They've already got an existing unit that they're living in, a residence, and how is it a hardship not to have a rental unit connected to the land, the structure, whatever?
So let's, let's put devil's advocate here, and guy's got a house, you know what, I'm gonna, I wanna expand my house, but right now, I can't expand it because, you know, I'd be violating, I, I would, I would be decreasing my setback below the twenty feet or twenty, you know, whatever setback he might be decreasing. So you know what, I'm going to apply for an ADU, and I'm gonna do that, get approval, rent it out for a year, and then start renting it. Now I got my expansion.
Yeah, and the question is?
Are, are we, are we allowing people to increase the size of our house for a short period of time in order to get a larger house and get it approved under an ADU, when their, their intention is, after a year, they're gonna forget about it, now they get their bigger house?
Yeah, they don't have to, they don't have to rent it, there's no requirement that they rent it.
They don't have to, they don't have to do the year, they can just do it.
Yeah.
Right, I was sorry, so are we, are we opening up for a lot of additional expansion when we, and, and in fact not creating a set, you know, new, new housing?
Well, they still have to put in a kitchen and all that, you know, are they gonna want an extra kitchen? If they're just want a bigger house, not likely. I don't think that's a concern, Brian.
Okay, I'm just, just tossing it out as far as
However, it's nine fifty-eight, let's come to a conclusion.
No, push it, Dan.
We're beating this thing to death.
All right, okay, so I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we present Dave's, Dave's proposed changes to the planning board. Can I have a second? Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, it is always a pleasure. Turned into a marathon, I thought.